We're going to start over so that Ms. Beal gets all of the discussion. Good evening and welcome to the Meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive and also access the meeting via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form on the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments. We also have those who signed up to speak in the meeting in person today, so thank you. At this time, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Ms. Beal, would you please call roll for this evening?
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Way?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Supalack?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and we would like to excuse Mr. Schneer for this evening. At this time, I am looking to entertain a motion to accept tonight's documents into the record. Do I have a motion?
We'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for the second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
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 Thank you again, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to City Council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, the City Council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the commission state that no new items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. The agenda this evening has been amended to postpone case number 1-5055 Upper Metro Mixed Use Case 21-094 INF Informal Review at the applicant's request. There's one case eligible for the consent agenda this evening, case 5 Emerald Fields Bicycle Pump Track, case 21-127 AFDP Amended Final Development Plan. Does anyone from the commission wish to remove this case from the consent agenda? The track, the pump track. Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Do we have representation from the Parks Department here this evening? Fantastic, wonderful. We're going to pull that item and we'll hear it in line in the cases below. It'll be the first one. Prior to doing so, I'd like to invite those who intend to address the commission to stand. Anyone intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, please raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to the commission this evening? Thank you all. You may be seated. All right. Case 5 Emerald Fields Bicycle Pump Track 21-127 AFDP Amended Final Development Plan. This application is a request for the construction of a modular bicycle pump track at Emerald Fields Park. The 34.32 acre site is zoned planned Hune Development District Northeast Quad Sub Area 2 and is south of Summit View Road, approximately 1,000 feet west of the intersection with Sawmill Road. Zach, it looks like you are on the agenda. Do we have an adjustment there?
We do. We have a last-minute adjustment. I will be doing my best.
All right. Thank you.
So this evening, I have Michael Hyatt with me. He's a landscape architect with the City of Dublin in the Parks and Recreation Division, and this is actually a project that their division is bringing forward. So this is a request for Emerald Fields Pump Track. This is an amended final development plan. The site is located within the northeast quad zoning district, south of Summit View Road and west of Sawmill Road. Specifically, we're talking about Emerald Fields today. So within this park, which accommodates a variety of active and passive uses, but primarily sports courts, the city is proposing to amend a final development plan that was previously approved for volleyball facilities in this area highlighted in yellow. And today, the proposal is for pump track facilities. Pump tracks are a bicycle sport which is intended to emulate other outdoor riding experiences in an urban environment. So the details of this proposal are shown on your screen. This proposal has been reviewed both against the amended final development plan criteria, but also in coordination with the engineering division regarding stormwater and our landscape zoning inspection team. The proposed character of the improvement is identified on the screen. You'll notice that adjacent to the improvement, there are other park amenities. Staff is recommending approval with two conditions, the first of which is already being finalized, and then also the second, which will be finalized with the building permits and all. With that, I'll turn it over to Michael to answer any specific questions the commission may have.
Nikki, before you turn it over, Ms. Martin, would you mind going into why this was under reconsideration from volleyball to the pump track, the challenge from the City Council, from the city as a whole?
Definitely. I think Michael is probably better suited to talk about the transition in programming from volleyball to pump track facilities.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Michael Hyatt, City of Dublin's Parks Department. I think it was 2018 that volleyball was proposed and the budget came in quite a bit over the planned amount, so it didn't go through. So we're looking at putting in this bike track.
Can you go into some detail as to the audience, what type of audience you're looking for during pump track? This is a new item for most of us sitting here on the commission.
Right. So the bicycle community has requested putting in a track throughout the city because we have a skate park, but we do not allow bicycles on the skate park. So there was a time where Dari Fields had a dirt track, but it is not in use anymore. So we're looking at putting in a modular bike track, and the idea is that the pieces can be put together and taken apart and taken to an event such as the Irish Fest and put in a tennis court, for example, to try out different spaces throughout the city for kids to try out the track.
Thank you. Mr. Fishman, did you have some questions?
Yeah. Just a second. Questions, is there a dry basin there, part of that, or am I imagining that?
A dry basin.
Water retention.
There is some... Is the screen on?
Uh-uh.
So within the tracks themselves, there's two tracks. To the south, there's just this triangular track, and we're proposing to put in bioretention basins within the inside of the track to treat water, stormwater in terms of water quality and quantity. But we've done the calculations, and we're going to end up having to store water during a heavy rain event in a type of pond. And so that would be a dry basin is what we're proposing.
Well, I noticed there's one right on the north side of the track.
Yes.
There's dry basin.
Yeah, that's conceptual right now. The goal is to have that put into the track, into some of these smaller areas, but if we have to, we will overflow into the dry basin. So it'll be a three-to-one mowable area in terms of lawn, but during a heavy event, it'll hold water for up to 24 hours.
The only thing I was interested about, it'd be a nice amenity to have a wet basin there if you could do that. Is that a consideration?
Sure. We're still working on the stormwater aspect of the design, so we take that into consideration. Sure.
Okay, fine. Okay. Can you explain a little bit about how this works and the... I was concerned about the potential liability. It looks dangerous.
Yeah, well, it's designed for all levels, all skill levels, all age levels. There's two different tracks, so you could have younger children use the smaller triangular track, and then older kids use the larger one because they're going to be going faster. And it's a one-way track. There's an in and out through this area, this kind of plaza entrance area. And so we'll have to decide if we want to determine which age group uses which track. But the highest peak of the track is only three feet, so it's not designed to have super-high speeds, but it's something we'll have to consider for different age groups.
As I read through this, is there an attendant that's going to be there, somebody with the city or something, to supervise it? Or is it just anybody goes anytime?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have plans to have some staff be an attendant there as of now.
So it's just free-for-all, so to speak?
Yeah, just like the skate park is now.
Skate park, okay.
If it puts the commissioner's mind at ease, the city would be a beneficiary of recreational user liability immunity statutes. So the city would not be at risk of liability for any falls on this type of facility.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fox?
So the, you'll show, there'll be wet ponds, and those four little wet ponds will be there all the time. I think that's great. My grandchildren would love this thing. And I also know that they have all kinds of other kind of wheelie devices that they would love to put on this thing, too.
Right.
So are you prohibiting, you seen the one-wheels?
Right now, it's intended for bicycles.
Okay.
We'll have to determine, you know, the kind of use that we want to see on the track, yeah.
Because you better expect it because you're going to get it. And it looks like your shelter has, what, benches for people to...
Yeah, shelter is existing, and there's, I believe, six picnic tables already inside the shelter. And then...
My only advice to you is, this is going to be very family-oriented. I could see taking my kids, my grandkids there. They would love this. But I would like to be able to sit somewhere close to the track to kind of watch them go around, and so being that far away on a picnic table and kind of set back about three picnic tables back wouldn't give me that kind of view. And I think that would make that a little bit more interactive for families if you had a little bit of seating around.
Sure.
Around the track, and you have opportunity with all your plantings to kind of create little niches that I think would be just kind of fun.
Mm-hmm.
So I like the idea.
I agree. The only reason I wanted to have you talk about it is I think it's going to be a great idea. It's another great amenity. Does somebody, have you seen one someplace else, some other city have one?
There is not one local to here. Other cities are putting these together. We'd kind of be the first one around that has this type of modular track that can be moved around. So yeah, it's kind of unique.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to encourage you to use water features because I think it'll be like it was said, it'll be a family-type thing. It'll be fun to have water features there and be pretty and everything, so.
Any other questions, comments? I just have a couple more signage. The skate park has some pretty specific signage up. What is the anticipated signage? You know, there were the concerns expressed about the one-wheel or the maybe skateboards going on the modular track, using it as it's not intended.
Yeah, there's, signage is going to be pretty important for this. I mean, this is the entrance area right here, right off of this existing track, so we'll probably have to have a pretty significant sign in terms of rules and which track people can use, what the hours are for the track, but there will definitely be signage involved.
Thank you. And then you mentioned that this is configurable, it's movable, and so the idea, you know, it could be taken down and moved to the Irish Festival or something like that. What would the expectation be for what it would look like when it's not on site?
Well, it's going to be placed on a five-foot-wide asphalt track, paved track, so we're not sure yet what it would look like without a track on it, and you could still use it as some sort of, you know, scooter path, but I'm not sure. And it could just be, you know, the weekend that the track is gone, so we'll have to think about what the space will look like during that condition.
I would wonder, again, back to the signage, if we convert it to a scooter track when the up-and-down pump track is gone, then we're violating our own signage, and when there is no penalty, there is no law. So just a call out there. And then finally, as you mentioned, there's not one of these local, and so this is new to us, and the most equivalent I can think of is the skate park. And the skate park is very well-placed in the city. It's near the police station so that there can be easy reaction if there are issues. You know, this is not the most safe, it's not the plastic bubble-type environment, so obviously there is some amount of risk that could happen to injure someone. Is there any concern with this type of amenity in this location, given its surroundings and location to fire stations, to police stations, anything like that?
Yeah, that's something we'll have to consider in terms of emergencies and injuries. Yeah.
I'd also point out that with the height of these being as small as they are, unlike the skate park where we've got pretty deep bowls, the injury possibilities is much smaller than what we do at the skate park.
Thank you. Any final questions? Ms. Fox?
Just one more comment. We've been talking about age restriction. Honestly, these kids can, they have balance like nobody's business. They can handle any of this stuff. They amaze me. And I can also see that a little, a young one who tries that triangle one and says he's pretty good at it just wants to get over there to that big one and show everybody what he can do, or what he'll be able to do within about a three-day period once he's on that thing. So, you know, personally, I would discourage you from saying this is so many years old and the other one is so many years old because this is just fun all the way around. So, yeah, that's just my thoughts, watching these amazing balancing acts.
The comment was it couldn't be enforced.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion from the commission? None? All right. This item was pulled from the consent calendar, the consent agenda. Mr. Boggs, are we looking for a motion on this?
I beg your pardon, didn't hear.
Are we looking to approve this item? This is an amended final development plan.
Right, so you'd be looking for a motion for approval with, I believe, there were two conditions. Is that correct?
Staff, could you present those, please? All right. Prior to any further deliberation or the motion, staff, has any public comment unreceived on the website, or is there anyone here who would wish to address the commission on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Looking back to the commission, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Emerald Fields Bicycle Pump Track Amended Final Development Plan with the approval of two conditions.
Second.
And I have a second. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Thank you both. All right. Moving on, so again, I will restate that we had the one item, the 5055 Upper Metro Mixed Use Informal Review was tabled at the request of the applicant. So moving on, we are going to a new case this evening. So this is Highland Glen at 7270 Highland Croy Road. We'll hear cases two and three together tonight. Case 21-116 ZPDP Resoning Preliminary Development Plan. The first application is a request for development of a residential neighborhood consisting of 102 single-family residential lots at a density of 2.4 dwelling units per acre with 12.4 acres of open space and associated site improvements. The 42.5-acre site is zoned rural district and is northeast of the intersection of Highland Croy Road with Post Road. Case 21-117 PP Preliminary Platte, the second application is a request for the subdivision of a 42.5-acre site to establish 102 single-family homes, single-family residential lots, nine public rights-of-way, and 12.4 acres of public open space. This site also is zoned rural district and is northeast of the intersection of Highland Croy Road with Post Road. Ms. Martin, it looks like you have our case presentation this evening.
Great. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for a rezoning with a preliminary development plan and a preliminary platte. This is the second step in the planned unit development process. As the commission may recall, this proposal was before you informally in May of 2021 as a concept, at which time you provided feedback that was generally supportive, particularly in comparison to previous proposals that we've seen for this site. So this evening, you are asked to make a recommendation to City Council to establish the framework for which this area may be developed in accordance with development standards that are set forth in the development text. Additionally, you're asked to make a recommendation to City Council on a preliminary platte for the subdivision, creation of lots, right-of-ways, and necessary utility easements. Subsequent to this evening and council's review, this proposal would be back before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a final development plan. That is the stage at which all final design details are approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That includes landscape design, tree preservation, tree removal, sign design, and implementation of all other regulatory standards agreed upon during the rezoning. So the site is located northeast of the intersection of Post Road and Highland Croy Road. Site is approximately 42.5 acres in size and approximately 3,000 feet of frontage along Highland Croy and about 500 feet of frontage along Post Road. The site is surrounded by existing single-family neighborhoods within the City of Dublin and is also adjacent to Jerome Township. It's important to note, as we look at the surrounding context, the proximity of this site in relation to US 33, State Route 161, and the to-be-constructed interchange improvements that are commencing in 2022. And then finally, to talk about the jurisdiction of Highland Croy Road. That road is under the purview of the Union County Engineer, and this application, specifically any of the traffic elements that we may discuss this evening, have been reviewed in coordination with their department. So a bit of history, this land was originally annexed into the city in 2018, and as you all know, the rezoning from a previous proposal was disapproved by City Council in December of 2020. So since then, this proposal has been brought forward, addressing not only the comments of the commission, but also the comments of the community. The proposal before you this evening is consistent with the community plan, the thoroughfare plan, and the special area plan. In detail, the site has two future land use recommendations shown on the screen, which ultimately results in a total development capacity of up to 113 lots. This evening, 102 lots are proposed at a density of 2.4 dwelling units to the acre, which is sensitive to the surrounding context and development character. The special area plan for the Highland Croy Road corridor sets forth a rural character which requires generous development setbacks ranging from 100 to 200 feet and also strongly encourages the preservation of historic structures. This proposal provides a generous setback of 100 feet along Highland Croy and also preserves two historic structures of the historic Gordon Farmstead. With this, the applicant is also implementing all requirements of the thoroughfare plan, which plan a future right-of-way of 100 feet for Highland Croy Road with all of those character elements. So the proposed development plan this evening, as we've discussed, is for 102 single-family lots. These lots are intended to be developed in three sections, section one being central to the site and containing 40 lots, as well as the main entry point along Highland Croy Road. The southern section, section two, will contain 33 lots, and section three, north of the South Fork of the Indian Run, contains 29 lots. So in addition to residential development, this site contains 12.4 acres of open space. It extends ML Red Trebu Nature Preserve through the Post Preserve neighborhood out to Highland Croy. This neighborhood also completes the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity network from Post Road all the way to the northern corporate boundary of Dublin along Highland Croy, accessing Glacier Ridge Metro Park. And then finally, it also establishes the opportunity for a two-acre public park located at the intersection of Post Road and Highland Croy Road. This is indicated as Reserve A and contains the preservation of both a large historic barn as well as granary. The recommendations set forth in this plan come out of intensive interdepartmental communications as well as consultation with a historic preservation consultant as to which structures are most suited to be maintained long term. So as mentioned, the development text sets up a framework for which development will be confirmed to meet at the final development plan. This neighborhood is structured into two different standard classifications. It includes interior lots and perimeter lots. Perimeter lots are intended to be sensitive to the surrounding established single-family homes, and those lot widths are consistent with the lots that they back up to, as well as the associated setback requirements. The interior lots are intended to provide a transition from north to south and east to west as the site transitions toward the US 33 Post Road Interchange Project. You'll notice there the lots are smaller in size with reduced setbacks and additional lot coverage. These development standards are consistent with previously approved surrounding development in Dublin, particularly when we are considering a mix of housing types and products as recommended in the community plan. So additional development details that are set forth in the development text include parking, garage door ratios, patios, sheds, fences, pools, solar panels, and skylights. Those have been provided for as identified on the screen and in your staff report. Finally, one of the items that was of great discussion when this site was previously under consideration at council was an opportunity to provide conceptual architectural character. This applicant has come forward to meet that request of council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as surrounding neighbors. The conceptual architecture is not being approved with the preliminary development plan. It's just simply setting the framework for the character of development that may be possible here. So it sets in place primary exterior materials that are permitted. You'll notice those are all natural or manufactured and natural materials, trim materials, roof materials, as well as garage door standards. So the open space and connect- So the open space and connectivity plan is an important piece of any preliminary development plan. You'll see here the sidewalks identified in blue and the shared-use paths identified in red. The final facilities will be refined between now and the final development plan, although the development does set up the open space ownership and maintenance responsibilities. This is documented not only in the preliminary development plan, but also on the preliminary plat. You'll see here that all of the open spaces are owned by the city of Dublin. The intent is to take the burden of any tax liability off the single-family neighborhood. And then the maintenance is distributed based on the primary user and intent. So you'll see that Reserve A, which is the public park located at the southern end of the site or the left-hand side of your page, is to be owned and both maintained by the city. Additionally, at the final development plan stage, this park will be fully designed and detailed by the city as a CIP project. So while the Planning and Zoning Commission will have purview over some of the elements that are presented, the final design details are not under consideration this evening. Reserves B, C, D, E, and F are largely maintained by the homeowners association as these provide the neighborhood frontage along Highland Croy, as well as entry features and signs. And then finally, the city is responsible for maintaining the functionality of the stormwater management basins, and that is really just to ensure the long-term health of our public system. The open space being provided in this neighborhood exceeds the minimum requirement set forth in the subdivision regulations, which is approximately three acres. So with the proposal, conceptual landscape character has been provided. You'll see here that the developer intends to provide street trees, as well as a rural roadway character along Highland Croy Road, and then additional plantings, bufferings, and gateway elements at the intersection of Highland Croy and Post Road. As previously mentioned, all of these final landscape details specifically for Reserve A, the public park, these will be finalized by the city in coordination with the applicant. And this evening, we're really just asked to provide the city and the applicant the opportunity to do so. Additionally, the applicant has provided a tree survey. Tree surveys, as well as tree preservation, tree removal, and tree replacement plans are finalized with the final development plan. It's important to have a general understanding of the number of trees on the site and those that are able to be preserved. The applicant will continue to work with us to ensure that the established character in the rear yards of adjacent neighborhoods is retained to the greatest extent possible. Additionally, the development text provides for the opportunity for a total of three development signs. These are entry features into the neighborhood, which will be detailed at the final development plan. One is permitted at each entrance, and that's up to 20 square feet in size and six feet in height, which is exactly how that is set forth in the standard zoning code. Initially, in 2006, city council had contemplated a development sign for the Post Preserve Neighborhood along Highland Croy through this neighborhood. However, in the intervening years, in coordination with ODOT, Post Preserve Boulevard access to Post Road as a right-in, right-out has been able to be retained, and therefore staff is no longer recommending relocating the Post Preserve entry sign. As always, with a rezoning, the applicant is required to conduct a traffic impact study. This traffic impact study is reviewed between the city of Dublin, as well as the Union County Engineers Office, and is currently under review. This traffic impact study mitigates any off-site impacts that may occur due to the development of this neighborhood. The infrastructure agreement, which is a separate document not for the Planning and Zoning Commission's consideration, will identify how those will be mitigated and how the applicant will contribute, as well as the city. Finally, this evening, you are asked to make a recommendation on that preliminary plat. The preliminary plat subdivides land in accordance with Chapter 153. There are a total of nine public streets, the extension of three existing stubs. This fulfills the 2006 interchange management plan. So in review of the 16 criteria for approval of a preliminary development plan and rezoning, staff is recommending approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission to forward to city council with six conditions, as found on your screen. And these are really just intended to document that, as in any development process, the applicant would continue to collaborate with the city of Dublin and the Union County Engineer to finalize items prior to the final development plan and city council review. We're also recommending approval of the preliminary plat, and that will allow us to make any minor technical adjustments prior to city council's review. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. The applicant team is here as well this evening, Charlie and Charles Rumah, as well as Linda Minieri. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We'll handle staff questions and applicants' questions separately on this item. So looking to the commission, does anyone have questions for staff at this time?
I just have one. Thank you for providing us with this information. There are a couple on here that are missing, and one is Ayrshire Farms and I think it's Overlook at Tartan Ridge. And it's so small, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. It is. So Ayrshire Farms is second from the bottom.
Ms. Martin, for the benefit of both the minutes and the people here and watching online, could you describe what it is that was provided to the commission this evening?
Yeah, so excellent point, Rebecca. So in advance of this evening's meeting, a member of the commission had raised to staff a desire to better understand this proposal in relation to surrounding recently-approved development within the city of Dublin. A list of various communities, including Autumn Rose Woods, Park Place, Post Preserve, Ayrshire Farms, Riviera, and others, has been provided for the commission. And really, this just compares a variety of items, including density, building materials, lot coverage, and percentage of open space.
Right. I bring that up because recently, we had Oak Park and Overlook at Tartan Ridge, and so there were questions there concerning many of the things we'll discuss tonight, and I just wanted it for comparison. So if I have some information on Overlook, but I don't have Ayrshire Farms, which is a single-family too. Maybe we could look that up, just in case we need it.
So Ms. Fox, are you not seeing Ayrshire Farms here, the second from the bottom?
I need to go to the eye doctor, don't I? Yes, this is the smallest print I ever saw, but that's okay because it's not a problem. I appreciate you getting it for me, but okay.
The option was a bigger piece of paper, so I wasn't really sure.
That's fine, don't worry about that.
And that's Ayrshire, right?
Ayrshire.
Ayrshire. We have a street in the city called Ayrshire, so we got a little confused up here. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other questions from the commission for staff at this time?
Just a quick question. The setback from Highland Croy, as you ride down Highland Croy Road developments, there seems to be a setback a lot further. Now, reading this, it's hard to tell, but is there a required setback? Or they don't look like they're going to be setback nearly as much as the subdivision right next to them there.
So the community plan recommends a variable 100 to 200-foot setback through the entire corridor. The way that that has been applied over the years to encourage the variability and rural character is to allow subdivisions to ebb and flow. This subdivision would be sighted at 100 feet setback. The subdivision to the north would be 200. The subdivision to the north of that would be 150, and that is how you begin to push and pull that rural character.
And for the benefit of those who can't see what we're holding, one of the columns calls out the Highland Croy setback. And so just as Ms. Martin spoke, you can see Autumn Rose Woods is at 150, Harriet on Jerome is 100, and it goes down and meets the same criteria that Ms. Martin called out.
Okay. The other thing is the coverage. There are, on this sheet, there are, I think, two that are 70-foot. Everything else is 70%. Everything else is like in the 40s. Was there any guidance on that for that corridor?
Yeah, that's a great question. So 45% is the maximum lot coverage set forth in code for traditional single-family neighborhoods. As we transition to the western edge of our city toward Jerome Township, as well as the US 33 Post Road Interchange, the community plan recommends denser, more transitional housing configurations, and therefore, in order to maintain single-family, the lot coverage increases.
So you say it gets denser as a...
In order to maintain single-family development at a denser capacity, as recommended in the community plan, lot coverage increases as you move west toward the township.
Okay. What a shame.
Any other questions? Mr. Wei.
I just have a couple. I don't know if it's me asking questions to find out more information or if I'm making a comment or not, but is there a reason why the multi-use path? I know that it goes up to the intersection of the roads, but then it swings back into along the roads in the development. Is that a city standard? Or I've seen that in other places in the city, and I was just curious because it creates a very interesting pathway.
Yeah, yeah. So our, and I'll let our transportation team chime in if they have anything else to add, but our shared-use path system in the city of Dublin is both intended to provide connectivity, but also a primary purpose is recreation. Therefore, you know, direct routes have not always been implemented, particularly along Highland Croy Road. The shared-use path pulls back from the road in order to provide a greater level of comfort and protection from that high-level, high-speed traffic. And it also serves a dual purpose along the west side of those public streets as a pedestrian and bicycle facility.
Thank you. I have one other very detailed question or comment. Lot 68 in the development appears to be one of the smaller large lots, or the, in terms of square footage, and it's a transitional lot from the existing development to the south. It seems like it may look, if you put a house on that lot, it would have to fit within that building envelope, and it would be a smaller house or maybe smaller footprint than others, and it might look different. And I'm just thinking that as you're transitioning from the existing development into the new development, it'd be appropriate to have lots that are more similar to the existing lots to the south. That one just stood out to me. I was looking at the plan, and I went, wow, that looks very small in that context. And so I don't know if that's a comment, and then I'll figure if there's a question in there or not, but has anybody considered that?
Yeah, we've certainly considered that, and let me see if I can pull up a plan for everyone, so they have some visual reference. So Lot 68 is this lot, oh, I'm on the wrong screen. Is this lot right here? And so this lot has a side lot line adjacent to existing development. The building line along that street is identical to the existing development, and the sideyard setback for that specific lot will be 10 feet, which is the requirement in Post Preserve. The only variability here is lot depth, right? And so lot depth, in this case, from a reality and a perception standpoint, in reality, is not as deep. However, from a perception standpoint, because of the public open space and amenity in that area, it'll actually really read like a continuation of a rear yard.
The other lots are wider along that street because they have the narrower depth, and because of that, they have the larger square footage. I just want to make sure that we're not creating a situation where something has to be done special to one of the units to make it fit on that lot, and then it looks out of place.
Yeah. I think the applicant can probably expand on that further, because we have asked them to do some analyses.
Ms. Martin, just a couple of other questions. In the development text, I know that we've seen before some discussion on encroachment into setbacks and whatnot with patios and that sort of thing, especially as patios now feature posts and then electricity and then televisions and fireplaces and everything else on patios. Is there a standard, or has there been a standard applied to previous developments, especially considering those interior lot rear setbacks can be at 10 feet? And now we're allowing five-feet encroachment, according to the development text. We would be allowing five-foot encroachment, so it's five foot off of the setback line. Has there been a standard used in previous developments?
Yeah, so that's the standard across the entire city, whether it's written into a development text or simply implied. That's permitted everywhere to encroach five feet at grade. You're not permitted to encroach five feet with an elevated structure.
Now, I have a vague recollection that we've had applications where they want to, hey, I have a neighbor with a patio, I want a deck, because my lot is not consistent with something at grade, or there's a slope to the lot or anything like that. Have we seen a lot of issues? I know we've heard some, but obviously, some is not indicative of a widespread issue.
I wouldn't consider it a widespread issue. In terms of our Board of Zoning Appeals process, anytime something is a recurring issue, one of the criteria for consideration of approval of that variance would be, you know, is this better addressed for the code amendment? And so if it did come to that place, we would either address the base code, which underlies this, or we would work with the developer, the homeowners association, to amend the zoning standards for Highland Glen.
Thank you. Switching topics slightly, still looking at setbacks and configuration, however. We look at those front setbacks and how far they have to be, both the interior lots and the exterior lots, but I didn't see in the development text the width of the park strip and the width of the sidewalk, at least that I reviewed. And, you know, walking through the city of Dublin over the course of the last week or so, I took specific notice of the feel of the neighborhoods when the park strip was at the minimum, you know, that four foot versus the six foot, and there's a lot of difference, even if the sidewalk width remains exactly the same. That park strip, the driveway width, excuse me, the driveway depth was exactly the same, and it was a totally different feel from one neighborhood to the other. And I think my neighbors thought I was crazy with a tape measure out there. I'm even looking at the roadway, thinking, why does this feel different? So is there anything in the development text? Did I miss something that calls out the width of those elements and therefore what the feel of this particular development would look like?
So there's nothing in the development text that calls that out specifically, but it's because it's relying on the standard drawing for the city of Dublin. So this is required to meet the existing standard, which is a minimum of a four-foot sidewalk with an eight-foot tree lawn. So there will be a substantial amount of area for trees to grow successfully.
Wonderful. Thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate it. Any final questions for staff at this point in time? Seeing none, I would like to invite the applicant up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Rumah, the president of Virginia Homes. Our address is 485 Metro Place South, Suite 350, Dublin 430. Our address is 485 Metro Place South, Suite 350, Dublin 43017.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, we've seen this application before, and, you know, this is, this is the, this is what we're here for. We're here to work together to make improvements that we can all be proud of, that we can all have in the city. So thank you very much for all of the effort. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this, both by you, by our staff, and only about this much by those people sitting up here. So thank you. Your, your work is appreciated this evening. Do you have a presentation you would like to, to offer this evening or?
Sure, I'd like to share a few words before we get started. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to, allowing us to share this new community, Highland Croy. What I'd like to do is share a couple thoughts, first and foremost, about how we got here, a little bit about the background and how this project came to be, and how, and from there, talk about what we've put into this and what, what the thought process was to put this current plan together. So we were approached earlier this year when the previous applicant decided to walk away from the, the previous development plan. And when, when that happened, we were looking at this, the potential of this project. We wanted to make sure we understood what the concerns were from, from the city of Dublin and what the concerns were from the, the neighbors. And so we, we spent a lot of time researching and reading the documentation that went into that so we could really make sure we understood how we could come back with a positive plan. You know, this is somewhat of a challenging site in some respects because this is really an intel piece. You know, if you look to our north, we have Park Place. If you look to our, our west, we have Highland Croy, Jerome Grand, and a potential retail commercial facility. To our south, we have some commercial property, and as we know, the newly formed off-ramp from 33 will be connecting into Highland Croy. If you look to our east, we have an existing community in, in post-preserve that has three predetermined access points that we're going to have to connect out to Highland Croy. So in a large part, our site plan has already been predetermined, right? And we're just trying to make the best use of this property because quite frankly, this is a transition, as Nikki kind of stated, that we're really transitioning from residential to the commercial to the highway. And so what is the best use to make this happen? And after looking through the, the documentation and the previous applicant and what they're bringing forward, we, we felt we had a great idea to, to make this happen. So we got into the planning, and we have worked tirelessly with the planning staff, with the engineering department, to make sure that we have addressed all these concerns. And quite frankly, there are, are six items that were primarily of our concern that we wanted to make sure we addressed. The first being the land use. This is a single-family development. This is not a multifamily. There's no multifamily component, and there's no adult living component. This is just a single-family community. We're going to be offering, you know, ranch plans to, to two-story homes for families. So there's going to be a wide variety of product available. We estimate that the, the average price point here will be well into the $600,000 or $700,000 range by the time it's all said and done. The density, obviously, the density was a concern in the previous application. There were 240 units. We have significantly lowered that number to 102. We've gotten rid of more than half of that density from the previous application down to 102 lots. And in that, we've been able to create lots that are, there's, there are no lots less than 60 feet. So we have a nice-sized product to create that transition. Open space, so the open space, we have around 12 and a half acres of open space. This will all be active open space with pass and connectivity. We are using this open space to maintain that rural character up and down Highland Croy. And it's, it's very much going to complement the site and what, the, the character that we're trying to, to preserve. Part of that, the next section on here is preserving the homestead. I know at our preliminary concept hearing, that was a major discussion, what are we going to preserve and what makes the most sense to preserve and how are we going to do that? The planning department spent a lot of time looking at these structures. They sent Parks and Rec out to look at these structures, the maintenance folks to look at these structures, to see what, what were these buildings like and what, what should we really maintain? At the end of that, it was determined that the barn and the granary should be preserved. And in that process, by saving the granary, we've had to rework our retention facility around that, which we've done. And everything works, and we're going to continue to look at this, this area. I think, at the end of the day, this is a significant opportunity for the city because as we're coming down off of this off-ramp from 33, I think there really is a significant opportunity, and I think you said it well in your planning report, that, that, you know, it can preserve Dublin's past and its future. And as you're coming off, you're going to see Dublin. This is really the gateway to Dublin in some respects. And so there's an opportunity here that we have committed with the staff to continue to work through the process to make the right decisions here. I think this is a very, much a moving target and something that we're going to have to continue to plan together. From our standpoint, you know, we want to make sure there's significant coverage and shielding from the community to that, that intersection, but beyond that, there's a lot of flexibility. We talked a little bit about the setbacks along Highland Croy. I think creating that, that rural character is very important. I, I think I'll note the other part of that, there's, there are no homes that have rear-facing elements to Highland Croy. All those houses or homes are going to be front-loaded onto secondary streets. Certainly, we're going to be doing this extensive landscaping up and down along that corridor with a final landscape plan. Lastly, and probably most significantly, we, we wanted to make sure we addressed the residents' concern. We lowered the density. We knew that was a heavy concern. I think we've achieved that goal. We wanted to make the consistency of product, all single-family. We've achieved that goal. We've matched the lot sizes along the, the previous, the existing neighborhood in post-preserve, and certainly will be putting together a landscape plan that will enhance the entire area and make it what it needs to be. So I think all in all, we've spent a great deal of time, especially with staff, and I certainly appreciate all their efforts and, and time and commitment to this because I think what we've been able to put forth is a very positive community that's going to be a significant benefit to the city and to this area. So with that, happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rumah. Looking at the commission for questions at this time, we'll hold our discussion until after public comment. Questions for the applicant? Ms. Fox?
Can you tell me the average square foot of the houses?
I, I think the average size will be in the 3,000-square-foot range. Like I said, on some of the smaller lots, we, we will start with an 1,800-square-foot ranch with options. And on the larger lots, certainly will have a bigger, bigger product, but I would say around 2,500 to 3,000 average would be very sufficient.
Thank you. The development text doesn't, doesn't say that you will put a smaller house on a smaller lot. So if I were a buyer, would I be able to choose from any house and put it on it? Like, if I wanted the larger 3,000-square-foot house, but I really just wanted a small yard, would I be able to put it there?
We are still working out some of our product mix. So that becomes a very difficult question in terms of sideyards and the size of product. Will we have product that will be in that size range on the smaller lots? I think we're, on a 60-foot lot, I think we'll be able to attain 3,000 square foot, yes.
Because I did notice that you have, some of your examples were 36-foot wide and some were 44.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at a 60-foot wide, some of those could, I could see where you're going to run into a problem if you, of tightness in there with these side setbacks. I mean, I can see where they're going to look from the street, pretty squeezed together if you let, if you let any size house go on any size lot.
If I may, Ms. Fox. Staff, when, when this comes back for final development plan, would it be possible to provide, given what's passed in the development text, a building envelope document that calls out where the building envelope is on every draw, on, on the lot layout across the subdivision?
Certainly.
That essentially would call out exactly where a building could be, could have its footprint on any lot.
I would think that would come in the development text, though. Wouldn't you think? I mean, how would you, how would you guarantee that? You know, we're, we're not into discussion yet. I'm just bringing this up because I wanted to know what your thinking was on it. But I would think that if there was a particular restriction on a certain size house width on a certain width of lot, it would be in the development text. Am I correct or no?
Sorry, I'm looking for the green light. Yes, any numeric restriction that you would like to recommend council set forth could be provided in the development text. In terms of the graphic depiction, that is not necessary until you get to the final development plan because the development text really only establishes the framework, so the guardrails in which we develop.
All right, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Pishman.
Couldn't we do that with the sideyard setbacks? Couldn't we make the sideback set yards larger, wider, on, say, go seven and a half feet, eight versus, I noticed a lot of these are five. So five-foot setbacks, so could we make the setbacks bigger on certain lots? That would solve the problem.
Right. And so the, the development text is really already structured in a way that contemplates different lots, having different characteristics that would be appropriate. So, right, you have the, the interior and perimeter lots. You know, I don't think that it would be appropriate to increase sideyard setbacks on any interior lots. Perimeter lots, you could potentially get away with a slight increase in setbacks, but really, ultimately, staff is recommending approval of what you see here today because it is consistent with the surrounding development. It's consistent with what we've recently approved in other neighborhoods. And my only caution would be that in order to maintain the transition and the densification of single-family, it's important that we allow reduced setbacks. Otherwise, we could unintentionally be encouraging a developer to change their product type.
If I may, I'd like, if I could address that a little bit, I think we need to be careful about the sideyards in some respects, especially on some of the larger lots, because in those, in those efforts, in that effort, we're going to be looking at larger home, potentially with families wanting a three-car garage. And obviously, that's going to start to spread out a little bit. Our, the intent of our product and what we're going to be doing here is trying to create a cohesive product that will look the same throughout the neighborhood. However, you're now 60-foot lots to 80-foot lots, so how do you achieve the difference? The smallest ranch is not going to be able, probably not going to be permitted to be built on an 80-foot lot, for example. We're going to, we're going to create, but they're all going to be created in the same architectural tone, and you're going to start to see three-car garages more on the larger lots. You're going to start to see different elements, but they're all going to be similar product, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense. I, I guess my concern is that probably in that price range, that square footage, most people want a three-car garage, okay? And, and so I think what my colleagues trying to bring up is that we don't want two big houses smashed up against each other, and especially the ones that you can see from Highland Croy, and they'll be facing. So I, I think that we, as I said, the only way to do it so you have control is adjust the setbacks on, on those so that, that there is space between houses. I think that's what you were trying to accomplish, right?
Yeah, I, I just caution that because I think it's going to be tough to provide. And it, you know, you start squeezing some of these sideyards in, you're going to start to, you know, aesthetically, I think the homes and creating the size you're looking for is going to be a challenge.
We'll get up to staff, I guess.
Ms. Fox?
I just have another question about the development text. I didn't see in there, and maybe it's just not spelled out, but will you be doing, will it be four-sided architecture? Or are, are these, I didn't see it in the text, but I do.
No, our, our intention is to adhere to the Dublin Appearance Code.
I'm sorry.
We're, our intention is to adhere to the Dublin Appearance Code.
Okay. That's four-sided architecture, correct. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Thank you, Mr. Rumah. At this point in time, I have a couple of people on the agenda who would like to speak to this item. Do we have Ms. Minnery? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Rumah. You can have your seat. I invite you. Please state your name and address.
Your mic is not on, ma'am.
Linda Minnery, EMH&amp;T 5500, New Albany Road. Good evening. I'm a landscape architect and planner and working with Charles &amp; Charlie on the project. I will answer one question for you, Kim. You've asked about the lot sizes. Can you pull up the plat sheet? I think it is four of six. For the most part, when we work on these, Kim, we've got utility easements and drainage easements. If, if you look at the plat sheet, four of six, it doesn't specifically give you what those pad sizes are, but if you start roughly at Lot 73, it's 71 feet wide, it's got a 10-foot sideyard along Highland Croy, a five-foot on the other side. It lends us a 56-foot wide pad. If you go the next lot down, it's 71 feet wide. We have a 20-foot utility easement that's split on either side of that. That lot ends up having a 56-foot wide pad. The next lot, again, a 56-foot wide pad, seven, well, actually, that's 71. Yes, you're taking away the 10 for a portion of that utility easement on the west side and five feet on the other. So you end up with 56 on that. 69 and 70s share a pretty big drainage easement that picks up all that storm and gets us into the pond of the north. So those two actually are about 60 feet for a pad. And then the last one, 68, which I think you were asking about, we have a 10-foot on the east side, shared with post-preserve, and a five on the other side that yields a 55-foot pad. So there's really only a one-foot difference of that with the majority of the other ones on there. If it's, you know, a, a big issue, we could take a foot out of 72 and 73 and make that a couple feet bigger. Trish could kill me and shift her storm drainage around a little bit, but really, those, I think visually, it looks like they're not all the same, but they're really all pretty close in terms of the, the building pad that fits on there, the width.
Yeah, thank you for that. I was just looking at the square footage, and the square footage for Lot 68 is, is more similar to the ones that are up facing Highland Croy in the 7700. And I just, I was just curious, I mean, again, I don't know how the houses fit on any of these, but I didn't want to see the, you know, some small, you know, smaller model forced into that lot, and then all of a sudden, it looks out of place on the street because it was, it had to accommodate that size lot. So I was just, I was making that comment.
Yep. I just wanted to be able to share that.
I, I have a follow-up while you're there also, and this is for the developer. And when you came to us before, you mentioned that the, the lots that were in section, the first section, the smaller lots, that that was going to be, you're trying to do a special product there and make those all into something different and unique. Is that still the plan? Does anybody remember that?
Yeah, I vaguely recall that conversation. Maybe that was kind of a discussion we were having and through the process, but no, there's no real difference in the product. I think there'll be different size products, and those, like I said, on the smallest lots, there'll be certain product, I mean, obviously, we can't put the biggest house on the smallest lots, and we can't put the smallest houses on the biggest lots. I think in general, we're going to try and make the product cohesive and look like one neighborhood while we have a few different sized lots.
Yeah, that was something that stuck with me in the last meeting because I was thinking there would be something unique and special. So I guess what I'm hearing you say is that you're going to have a variety of, of house types, and they will be able to fit on any lot or only some lots.
So there will be, all, all of the homes will look pretty much, from the same architectural standpoint, they're going to look similar. We're going to have smaller ranches and smaller two-stores that will be fitting on some of the 60- the sixty-foot lots, and as you get to the eighty-foot lots, there will be larger products that will be available there. Obviously, we will not be able to fit the larger product on the smaller lots. Conversely, we're not going to take the smallest product that fits on the sixty-foot lot and put it on an eighty-foot lot. So, we're going to have a, kind of a, a structure that makes sense as we build this product line to fit the different sized lots.
Yeah, I probably didn't state that, that well, but what I was saying is that you'll have an array of products that will sit on, that will fit on a variety of lots, but it's, there's not going to be any unique part of the, that's, of the subdivision that will stand out differently. It's all going to be consistent.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Supalak. Thank you. Thank you again. We have one more person on the agenda signed up to speak, Ms. Brown. All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any other members of the, of the public who would like to speak on this item this evening? And then, staff, have we received any public comment online?
I have not received any during the meeting. Nikki, did you have any prior to, that needed to be shared?
No, there's been no public comment prior to the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Ruma, you may sit down again. Thank you very much. At this point in time, I'd like to go into deliberation with the commission. Let's start. I never start with you, Mr. Grimes. How about we start with Mr. Grimes this evening?
Well, I'd be glad to start. Thank you very much. I like this layout, the preliminary development plan and the preliminary plat. I think it fits the property very well as a gateway, as, as is mentioned. I think it's a great use of the property. And I, I look forward to the final plan, and as you know, we'll be looking at it rather closely. A lot of great comments from my fellow commissioners, and I echo a lot of their thoughts and concerns. And I particularly like the way you're going to have the granary and the, and the frontage down there. I think that's going to be a, a, a great asset to your development as well. So, I thank you for all your hard work, and, and the staff as well. So, thank you. It's a win-win.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Way.
I agree with Mr. Grimes. I think that the project fits very well into the, the existing neighborhood. I think it's an appropriate extension of the neighborhood, and all of the measures in terms of open space that are being created is going to be a real asset to this part of the city. So, I, I support.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Supalak.
I concur across the board. Kudos. Obviously, we all know the history here. It was some, quite a bit of consternation on our side with potentially what went in here. You guys have, have solved it well. I'm going to continue to advocate for, and I know it's, I know it's going down the path, and I, I do appreciate what's already in the drawings relative to the, relative to the, the park down nearest, the intersection, Reserve A, et cetera, and the barn, that I just, you know, I hope we have a lot of sensitivity there and really, really thought through. I actually very much appreciate the kind of potential orchard quality that's kind of starting to set up, and if there's potential to have like a Dublin Gate presence out there on that corner. I don't know if it's there on this property, or sort of the properties that, that's there, but that'll continue to be a, continue to be a thing we, we will watch out for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Fox.
I, I agree that this is a much better layout than what we've seen in the past, and I do appreciate that you've, you've met so many of the checkpoints that we wanted. You definitely have created that hundred-foot barrier. You've softened the gateway entrance. You've utilized, and I'm sure when you come back from the final development plan, the Red Tray View walkway through that is a nice amenity for the neighborhood. So, I like all of that. What I would bring up to the commission to consider, though, is this concern about setback. And the reason I say that, and the reason I asked Nikki to provide this, is because the only other development that we have allowed a seventy percent coverage recently was Hamlet on Jerome. And since we did that, we had a very long conversation about how tight those buildings were together, to the point that you could not get a piece of mowing equipment in between them because of the impact of window wells, air conditioning units, that sort of thing. We had to, we had to bend over backwards to figure out how to get access in between these buildings. So, I thought to myself, okay, I'm listening to Nikki's argument here. And I agree. I think that we, we need to get a little bit denser as we move over there, and, and I'm, I'm okay with that. But I want to be consistent. And as I looked back on Oak Park, they had side yards of six foot, and rear yards of fifteen foot, and front yards of twenty, and their lot sizes were fifty-five to sixty-nine. The overlook at Tartan, at fifty-six lots, had a lot coverage of sixty. And they had a front setback of twenty-five, fifteen for the porch, though. And they had a rear yard setback of twenty-five, and they, and they had a side yard of six. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is that even though it doesn't seem like much, if we keep reducing by a foot here and there, we really begin, even though we have diverse architectural styles, which I will also speak to, I don't believe that it's going to read very different. It's going to read very straightforward and align without much, and now I understand, if, if, if the development text said that a certain width of a house went on a certain width of a lot, you could be guaranteed that you wouldn't have that happen. But with the demand for housing these days, you may very well sell that great big house and have to put it on the interior lot. And if I were you as a developer, I'd take that money and take it to the bank, because that's the way, I mean, it, it seems to me that, you know, if you have the product available and you have a lot available, and it doesn't say you can't do it, it might land up there. So, that concerns me. The other thing that concerns me here is, I think your architectural style is lovely, but they're all front-loaded garages, and they're all fifty percent facing the street. I know it's possible on a narrow lot to get some side-loaded, or some courtyard-loaded, or something that would break that pattern up. Maybe you want that style, but it seems to me that because it's a long linear, it's a long linear street, I would just ask the commission to discuss maybe whether or not that front-facing garage style needs to be changed out a little bit, just for a matter of discussion. The other thing I, the other thing that concerns me is that there's allowances for three signs on monument bases, and they're twenty-foot wide, and they're at all three entrances. For a rural character along the front, without a description of what that looks like, and I guess they have to come back with a sign package, that seems like, that seems like a lot of signage along that strips for three large twenty-foot square signs. The, the other thing is the patio lots. I know by watching the border zoning appeals, everybody wants to encroach their patio. Everybody does. As a matter of fact, at Oak Park, the Board of Zoning and Field has asked council to do something about this, because they're all coming forward with it. So, if you only allow ten foot in the rear lot, and you've got a drainage easement back there, and you allow it to encroach five foot, you're encroaching five foot with a hard material on a drainage easement. So, I personally think that we need to get a little deeper lot setback in the back. The other, the other thing is exterior materials. This is probably the first time I've seen for trim materials, foam and engineered wood. We haven't allowed it in any of the others. And, and you only give us one option on roofing material, which is asphalt. And many of the other developments offer us shingles and copper and metal seam and all sorts of things. So, so, you know, I, I, I don't want to vary from the quality of materials, and, and thin brick is not something that we've said yes to either. So, I would like to, you know, get back to where we are with consistency with the others. If, if you weren't at this price point, I, but at this price point, that's what all the others do at that price point, too. So, I think that's the consistent piece that I'm looking at. I believe, let's see if there's anything else. And you answered my question about four-sided architecture. So, I think those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fishman.
Well, Ms. Fox said about everything I was going to say. I, I agree with a hundred percent of what she said. I was concerned, I, I also, when I was looking at the text, you, you show some metal roofs, and that, but that's not mentioned in the text that I know of, unless I missed it. But I, I, I think that, that the, this, I think we're trying to put too many lots on the development. I know you want to put as many as you can, I think, and I think you've done a commendable job. There's no question. I, I think it's nicely laid out and so on. I don't know that anybody would support this, but I'm worried about Lot 68 also. And, and that's just one, I think that's one of the biggest offenders. Also, if that lot was eliminated, then Stillhouse Lane would have access to the water, which I think would really be an amenity to the subdivision. You'd have that open space, the people there, because right now, you'd have to, you know, walk through the brush between the two subdivisions. So, I, I would like maybe, if anybody else supports me on that. But I, I'm worried about that lot, but I'm also worried about the, the setbacks, and the, and Mrs. Fox made the point that I was going to make about patios, and people are now want variances for brick patios, and grills, and covered things, and, and, and I saw one at BCA, too, that eighteen feet was just, they wanted eighteen feet just for the brick patio, and then they wanted to go in. So, I, I think in these expensive homes, I think that's going to be a real concern. So, I'd like to see a look at that. Sixty-eight, and then, I, I can't disagree. I, I, I'm kind of surprised that you were using foam trim and aluminum and so on. Yes.
And, yeah. Can we, Mr. Fishman, would you mind if we clarify that? So, aluminum trim was a typo in the staff report. The, the foam trim is contemplated in the development text, although it does not compel the developer to use it. Those types of extruded foams were recently approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Towns on the Parkway project, and really, the intent is to minimize maintenance costs over time and allow for additional architectural detail that would be hard or costly to come by with wood.
Now, for clarification, I do believe that that was upper stories. So, these are single-family homes, lower stories, where you're going to have interaction with people, interaction with basketballs, interaction with different things that a second, third, fourth story would not necessarily have.
With lawn mowers also.
Yes.
I've had experience.
Yes, yes.
They can really, they, am I allowed to address that or answer some of the questions?
We're in deliberation at this time. However, I will give you opportunity after we've deliberated to respond.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ruma.
To affirm my comments, and sixty-eight bothers me. I don't know if it bothers anybody else. And I, the setbacks certainly bother me. And I just think it's, it's a beautiful development. I think that, that we, we might have to do something to make it more palatable as far as the, the, the amount of lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. I, I also.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. If I may comment, just with regard to some of the concern expressed with encroachment of backyard patios and that setback, just noting on the plat of where the drainage easements are versus where, what is a building line setback, the, a patio would not be permitted to encroach into a drainage easement. So, just in case that addresses some of that concern, or just to clarify what we're talking about in this context, so, for instance, between lots ninety-five and ninety, ninety-five and ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine?
Or here.
What about eighty-four, eighty-five?
How about between thirty-four and thirty-one, you have a twenty-foot drainage easement? That encroachment provision for patios off rear yard setbacks would not allow a patio to encroach five feet into a drainage easement such as that one.
How about a deck?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Overall, I love, Ms. Ruma, how you said, you know, continue to plan together. That was the term, and I think that we have gotten, you know, to use one of the other applicants that we've seen, and he's not here today, but his, his colleagues are, you know, we're coming close up on the end zone. I, I think we're coming close. I, I don't necessarily think that we are all the way there, but I, I don't think we're very far off. I also caught the thin brick. That, that was in my notes as well. That's, I know we permitted it, but it's the, they give an inch, and then, you know, everyone wants the same. And when we've not called out, we're allowing for the foam because this is third story. It would be very helpful for us if that also went into staff reports, you know, yes, the commission has allowed this before, however the consideration was. That would be helpful, because it's not always going to be the same people up here. And if anyone here is like I am, I'm not going to remember everything. And so, that would be helpful. And I also have concern about the setbacks, but maybe not for the same reason. So, five-foot setbacks are very narrow. And what we're, I think, all visioning is every house with a five-foot setback, and there's no variation, there's no undulation, there's no variety in the development. And as, Mr. Ruma, you called out, not every product is, belongs to every lot, and so there's going to be some variability. And I know that there is the desire to have flexibility in maintaining kind of the vision that you have, but I, I like what we talked about in our planning sessions, where we would have, a five-foot setback is allowed, but the distance between two homes cannot be less than, for instance, twelve feet. And so, that way, the five-foot setback can happen on the one lot, and then right next door, it's two feet over, something like that, if it's interior versus the exterior lots. Five foot on every lot makes me very nervous. I, I don't think I could be supportive of five foot on every one. And I also appreciated the call-out of the different building types. I, I like the building envelopes. I like that being called out, so that we can really have a vision of what this development is going to look like, what it could look like. Because it could be, in two years, you've built one phase and say, okay, well, we're good, you know, somebody else wants to run with the ball to the end zone and, and finish this development. And they might not share your vision. And so, then, the cohesiveness or the using of all of the variability or the non-variability in the development text could happen. So, that makes me, that makes me nervous, and the side setbacks make me the most nervous. I also would look to the commission for the ten-foot setback with the five-foot encroachment. That is a very, that's less wide than we give our trees to grow in a park strip. That's three feet less wide than we give our trees to grow in a park strip. So, that makes me nervous. And again, I'm not looking for no one to be allowed, but it is very difficult when you're in a development. You can't have one person who fits exactly the same bill, they have a ten-foot setback on their property, and the next house has a ten-foot setback. Well, one can build a patio, one can't, we, we can't be arbitrary, but if the building envelopes were different, if one house protruded more into the backyard and meant that ten-foot setback, and the next one had a six-foot setback, you know, those, sorry, not a six-foot setback on the rear, six-foot extension off of the rear of the house to meet the, the six-foot setback, so they had a six-foot patio, something like that that gives us variability. What we're looking at is very cut and dry, very black and white. Ten feet can be encroached on five feet. We have to envision everyone doing the same. Five-foot setback on the side yard, every house having a five-foot setback, and therefore two houses having ten feet between them. And that's kind of how we have to play out the development text. And so, what we're looking to do is perhaps write into the development text, and again, we'll have you come forward and, and give some feedback here, some of the restrictions that would provide comfort that there's going to be variability between houses. So, if there is, you know, a five-foot setback, then the opposing house has to meet a seven-foot setback. If the lot, the building footprint of the lot is twenty feet off of the, the backyard, then it can have up to an encroachment, something that provides kind of that vision for variability in a development. Now, the other things that I heard my fellow commissioners. variability in a development. Now, the other things that I heard my fellow commissioners talk about were difference in shingles. I don't mind asphalt shingles. We have developments now that look beautiful, that have asphalt shingles. However, not having just one type called out gives you flexibility. And so if you're looking, hey, you know, wouldn't it be nice if we could have some metal roofing products, or, hey, you know, that smaller, denser product where it has the farmhouse style, that would be kind of cool to offer, then that gives you flexibility, or someone subsequent to you, flexibility. The foam, I think I already touched on that. And then the Lot 68, with the clarification from the landscape architect, I'm not as concerned about that lot, but I do understand that that would have to require a smaller product. And so I echo Ms. Fox's comments on, you know, what that could be, drawing out that envelope, making sure that the setbacks are appropriate for something that is smaller, to be on the smaller footprint lot. I don't know that I missed anyone, but could anyone from the commission, did I forget any of the concerns that the commission expressed?
Lot coverage is the one thing.
Lot coverage. So again, with the setbacks, so 70%, again, to us is a number. And if we look at 70%, you know, I think we had two. Riviera was the one that I think you hadn't mentioned, was the Riviera subsection C. Yeah. So we've had two recently, but again, we're looking at 70%. We're looking at every lot having 70% coverage. And could that be something that we would be proud of, that the neighbors would be proud of, and ultimately, that you would be proud of as well? So again, if we could have 30% of the lots, could be up to 70%. You have in your mind already, some lots are going to have some homes, some types of styles. So can we play that out in the development text to ensure that we have that variety, and that we're not maxing out every single lot? I understand that there's flexibility desired in building, but there's also a need to ensure that the residents are getting like products. You've gone through great lengths to make sure that you're mirroring lot sizes. But I think that there's still a little bit more that we need to work together to provide, so that this product is really what we're all looking for. Staff, any comments, any call-outs?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant back at this time. Hello, Mr. Ruma Senior, Mr.'s Ruma this evening.
Is that on? Yeah.
Yeah, could you please?
My name is Charlie Ruma. I am... I was formerly president of Virginia Homes. I'm no longer.
Could you just take your address, just for the record?
My address is 3675 Paragon Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43228.
Thank you.
Addressing the smaller lots, and again, we did this exact same thing and had almost the same discussion at Riviera when we proposed those 60-foot lots. And there were a lot more than, I think there were 60 of those small lots in Riviera. And they came out beautifully. The whole intent is to make sure that we're meeting a market for empty nesters and for young professionals. And that's what this product is all about. We're not sure that we're going to be the builders. That's the key here. But I can tell you that on a 60-foot lot, you're talking about a house that is 36, 40, or 44-foot wide. You might get a 50-foot house, but I doubt it. So you all of a sudden have the side yards that you're going... that are there, just by the variation in the product. On the 70-foot lots, you really want to give us flexibility, so that we can put in three-car garages, so we can put in courtyard product, so that we can fit a bigger house on a 70-foot lot without encroaching on the side yard. Lot 68 is a 70-foot lot, but it abuts Post Preserve, and there's a tree line on that property. And we've committed ourselves to saying, we're going to protect that tree line. There's a 10-foot easement on that area, or 10-foot side yard, that we're saying, we're not going to encroach, because we want to protect that tree line. And that's input from Post Preserve neighbors, who said, we want that to happen. When you look at the 70-foot lot, and we took off the 10 feet, all of a sudden, we've got... If you want to start saying you want to cut in on that side yard, all of a sudden, you're putting an inferior product next to Post Preserve. And I don't think we want to do that. I don't think Post Preserve wants to do that. I think we want to maintain the most flexibility that we can to encourage the best and most suitable product that fits this neighborhood. And that's what we're trying to do. And try to understand this. When we started off, we were looking at that 60-foot lot area as maybe being attached housing, and a little bit more dense. But that's not what the neighborhood wants. That's not what planning told us. They want single-family housing. They didn't want assisted living. They didn't want condominium attached housing. They didn't want three-story buildings. And I think we've solved a major problem on a problem piece of land at that intersection of Post Road and Highland Crowe, especially considering that when we started, that was going to be a circle. There was a rotary at that intersection. And all of a sudden, the road has moved, the intersection now has an off-ramp that goes right to Highland Crowe, and Highland Crowe Road at that intersection becomes significantly different. And I think what we've done is really enhance the... enhance the whole site, so that we've got a great transition for people saying, oh, I'm coming into Dublin. Here's what I'm looking at. We've got a barn, we've got a granary, we've got a pond, we've got landscaping. Hopefully, we can get the city to put a stone wall, which is characteristic of Dublin, on that intersection. I think it's going to be a great way to approach this. But please, give us the flexibility, so we put the right product in. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Mr. Ruma. Mr. Ruma, welcome back.
Just to address the materials, in terms of the roofing, you know, listing the weight, if that's a concern, or what that product was, we're going to be installing the same roofs that we've installed in pretty much every product we've built in the city of Dublin. We're looking at a dimensional shingle combined with metal roofing in some cases. You know, if we want to add wood or the flexibility of that, that would be fine. But in this price point, that just doesn't seem suitable to have wood shingles, or any of the different types of shingle, or slate, or something like that. A dimensional asphalt shingle, it's the same thing we've done all over the city of Dublin since we've ever built homes here. In terms of the foam trim, this is primarily above windows, headers, where we use an Azac or a Fipon-type material. That's a product... We're not talking about all the siding and all the fascia and all the other boards. We're talking about decorative products that are headers and sills and other things that are typically used in every community in the city of Dublin today. There's a note for aluminum trim. There is no intention there. We're using Hardy siding and trim. It's all natural. As far as the thin brick, I heard a concern about thin brick. I guess I don't know what the concern with that is, other than the fact that, I mean, it's a great product that's been used, and it's very similar to stucco stone, the way it's applied. We all know what building costs are doing these days. Using real brick in some cases is just financially not the best decision. And it's become a very viable product. We don't use a ton of thin brick. It's more of an accent. But it is an all-natural product, and it's applied the same way a stucco stone would be applied. And I don't know if there's any specific concern. I'll be happy to address that. But by and large, the materials we're using are the same materials we've used on every project we've built in Dublin. And there's really no... You know, we're staying with the appearance code in terms of all this stuff. We're not trying to put vinyl or aluminum or any of those products. This is all natural. You know, I'll be happy to address any of those questions, if there's any more specific questions about some of those materials, but...
Did you want to ask a question? I just had a question. Looking at the architecture, and looking, you know, at these inspirational images that have been provided, I see very little brick, mostly on the columns, so up, you know, three feet with maybe a collar around the top. Would there be a concern? Ah, that one. I'm looking at little images. Looks different than on the big one. But... So if you look, so adjacent to the garage on that one, on the upper right there, if you scroll down the last page there, you can see some of the, you know, up three feet along the sides. I see very little brick, and I think that's where, obviously, we want good products. We want that variety. We have heard and have witnessed, you know, we have a hotel that has brick falling off of it, thin brick falling off of it when it's three, four years old. And so that's our concern. Our concern is that people who are going to be buying these homes at the price points that you've already mentioned in the neighborhood, that we have taken time and a lot of deliberation in making sure that it's something that is a good product, and we have experience of, an inferior experience of the same type of product. So I suppose that is my personal, and I look to the commission for their discussion.
I'll be honest, I don't have trouble with the foam, right? You don't want to put up a bad foam product in... on these houses any more than anyone else does. The builder doesn't want to put a bad foam product up on these. And they do come with, even though you're hearing foam, they do have a solid, solid shell, right? And to the point, they're used in locations that are appropriate, so not in low... not typically in low portions, right? So I don't necessarily have a problem with that. And if a builder puts it in a low portion, it's a shame on them, and they'll be immediately called on warranty type of stuff. As far as the thin brick, the unfortunate part about the foam, the foam looks the part, right? The thin brick, a lot of times, I mean, she's alluding to an example where it's actually was off-the-ground, it was a weight concern. Thin brick made structural sense, right, because of the way the building was construction. But it ends up being, working out poorly, and it's probably actually an installation problem. My concern with thin brick is, you know how it goes. It just never comes across as thick or solid or rich, right? Like, it clearly, you can clearly... Unlike the foam, the foam looks rich and quality. The thin brick, you can actually tell around the windows, and it just, it comes across as problematic. I could support trying to strike that as well. The unfortunate thing is, we rarely, rarely, if ever, allow thin brick, and it's usually really circumstantial structures, is what it comes down to.
My response to that only would be, currently, the way that the development text reads, it doesn't call out that foam can only be in the appropriate areas. It just says that it's a trim material and approved. So if we could differentiate, then I believe that I could feel a little bit more comfortable with that.
I think foam might be a little misleading. When I think foam, I'm thinking styrofoam. This is really a fiberglass-injected mold that's a solid material. This isn't... that's painted, so it's more natural and solid than anything you're going to find.
So I've just seen the teenager backing the car out and coming back in the garage with the lower foam portion that makes the kind of... So if you were to look back at those images, so if you look at some of the, immediately adjacent to the garage on, what is that, the second page? So where you have those columns, the... if you had that lower, where maybe stucco kind of bumps out and wraps around one of those columns, you hit that, and it's a foam, and you have a dent, and it's not like wood, where you can pop off a plank and really quickly put it back together. What I see is dent. And so I see that remain on a home.
So the columns that we would build are all wood, if you want to stipulate that there's no foam columns, or the foam... The only place we use fiberglass or foam is on a window header.
And I would be okay with a window header.
That's... You know, there are accent pieces maybe in the gable, or a window header.
Roof trim and window?
Again, that elevated away from, you know, really, the only thing you're going to hit up there is somebody took a really wild three-point shot.
So all of our window trim, columns, all those things are built with Hardy, which is a fiber cement product. Our window headers sometimes are that same product, or we may do something more decorative.
So Nikki, Jenny, Ms. Roush, and Ms. Martin, do we define trim in our development text, in our code? So do we have a... I'm just looking, do we need to call it out, because here is trim, or does the definition of trim actually say it's above ground, it's, you know, considering window headers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
I think Thad has the answer.
Yes. In the zoning code's general definitions at 153.002, it defines trim as "the finished woodwork or similar architectural element used to enhance, border, or protect the edges of openings or surfaces such as windows or doors." I'm not sure if that is helpful, given your objective.
Surfaces, and the garage door is really where my focus, where I've seen the inferior product manifest. Okay, all right. So looking back to the commission, again, we're in the deliberation portion of this item. So I've heard the concerns with the asphalt. The applicant responded to that. Is there any further discussion on treatment? Has anyone's concern been alleviated, or does that concern still remain? Okay, so that concern has been alleviated. The foam, I think I'm the only one who has the hang-up, looking for commission. Am I the only one who has the hang-up on foam?
Well, sorry, if the foam is at ground level, it's going to get beat up by lawn mowers. Lawn mower is the big thing.
You dropped your microphone.
Just, you know, beats it up. Okay, so if it's up high on the second story, I don't see a problem with it, if it looks good. But I certainly see a problem when it's reachable to mowers and kid stuff.
Yeah, like I said, I think if we're talking about trim, and we're talking about foam and/or a fiberglass molded product, these are window headers, there are decorative vents, there could be gable accents. That's all we're talking about. This is not a ground-level material. This is not a trim that goes all the way around or builds columns.
So, Ms. Ruma, would you be amenable to an adjustment to the language in your development text, where it says "trim," and it calls out the materials, where we specifically call out that material that we're having pause with, the foam, shall not be used at ground level?
Yes. Foam will not be used at ground level. That is not an issue with anything we're doing here.
Okay. Now, I did hear the aluminum, and then staff responded to that. Was there any remaining concern on the aluminum call-out? Okay. Drainage easement, staff also responded to that. Was there any?
Yeah, I have a question about that. I thought the lot line ran down the middle of the easement. My understanding, my looking at this, and I may be wrong, but I thought the lot line was the middle of the easement. And the easement lays over on one side of the lot line or the other. So it's not like you're... I know you can't encroach onto an easement, but I guess my point here is, is that not everyone has that. I think it goes back to lot coverage. These homes... Let me ask you this question. Do you supply a patio design with your homes, or do people add that later?
That is typically added after.
Right. And this is where we run into a problem, because they have these homes, you don't have a particular square foot limit, you have very narrow setbacks, you build a house, and you want a patio. And they go to Board of Zoning Appeal, and they're upset that there's no space for one any longer. And sometimes, and you may not be the builder, the builder doesn't tell the person... builder, the builder doesn't tell the person that, listen, this is as far as back as you can go. So what happens, it lands back at Boarding and Zoning Appeals because they go, well, we want a patio. Oh, we're sorry, you don't have any room for a patio. So what happens, Boarding and Zoning Appeals gets very sympathetic to that. They let them have it. Then every other neighbor comes and wants the same thing. So I think 60% lot coverage is standard, what we've given to everyone else in the same price point with the same size lots with larger setbacks. And I believe that's what we should do here.
Is there merit, right? The rear yard setback is, how about this? A couple of different things. One, the people who come back, they feel duped, right? They didn't realize, they didn't know. So there's something to be said for, is it clearly communicated when they're, at the time they're buying? I guess I'm going to, you're going to lot coverage. Is it also the rear yard setback that we've had?
But if you, if you reduce the lot coverage, then you have more space for rear yard setback. And you have more space for patios, which is, I think, what everyone wants. It's quality of life.
See, and I would look at, I look at the product, I look at the location. We are buffering. We are transitioning. I think Dublin has done a marvelous job. I actually, when we moved here, the Cardinal Health to the, I don't remember what the neighborhood name is, there to the north of Cardinal Health, I called my friend who was on city council and said, hey, you gotta do this because this is phenomenal. You transitioned from a freeway to a beautiful, large-scale, very large parking lot, building to, at the time, it was 600, $700,000 homes that are now significantly more than that. That transition was unheard of in my former city. This is more traditional. This is more, we're going single-family homes on quarter to third acre lots to single-family homes on a little bit smaller lots. Again, maintaining that density. I mean, you look at the overall density of the, the application here. Nikki, I'm sure you could probably just cite it off the top of your head. 2.4. 2.4, we're less than an R3 here. I mean, this is a phenomenal, moving in the right direction. And I would agree. However, we do have that section of little homes that is the compromise really. And I wouldn't say it's a compromise because again, we're at 2.4 units per acre. So this is standard. What we did was we clustered. This, to me, just looks like a PUD. We took an R3, we got this massive section of open space in the middle. And the overall density is a 2.3. Again, we're clustering those smaller homes. To me, that's really where the, that's where the duped, I'm gonna use your word, Mr. Suplek. So that's where the duped comes in. We hear from residents that, hey, you know, it was stamped on plat. We hear that. It was stamped on this. We hear that. Nobody really looks at their plat. Nobody really looks at that documentation. They just come to the Board of Zoning Appeals and says, why can't I enjoy peaceful living in my home, in my property? And that's, that's where we run into issues. So I, I think we can solve this without lot coverage because I think that 70% is appropriate in those smaller sections. But I think we need to address setbacks. That's where I am. I think that that, we're uncomfortable with the potential of five foot, five foot, five foot.
And if I may, very, just very quickly, the definition of lot coverage would include impervious surfaces and semi-pervious surfaces. So if the concern is encroachment of patios, lot coverage wouldn't necessarily address that because you're shrinking the space both for the house and the patio.
That makes sense. So, all right. Just to clarify one more time on where patios would be permitted to be located. Patios are only permitted to be located within the buildable area of the lot. And so now what is the buildable area of the lot? The buildable area of the lot is within the setbacks and then also not located in any sort of build line, no build zone, or utility easement. So all of the lots that have a 20-foot utility easement between them, like a drainage easement, you would have a minimum distance of 20 feet between those patios because no patio is permitted to encroach there. And that's because that area is graded very specifically in order to move water.
So my question to Mr. Rumah is, if I were going to build a home on an interior lot and I wanted a patio, would I have space?
We're looking at three, potentially four different styles of homes within the smaller section. You're gonna have, as Dad said, 36-foot wide homes, 40-foot wide homes, 44-foot wide homes. You're gonna have 40-foot deep homes to 60-foot deep homes. There's gonna be a variety. So in some instances, yes, there'll be more room than others. You want some flexibility. You want some areas, you know, if somebody wants to maximize their interior space and then they want to blow out a patio, that's a discussion that should occur. I, as a builder, can't say, we'll make sure we tell everybody and they're all informed because we know that's not gonna happen. We, you know, that's a very difficult conversation that it's not always gonna be there and folks, maybe they feel duped, but in my mind, there's gonna be a lot of flexibility in our product. And when we say the side yards are only five feet and they're all gonna be scrunched up next to each other, I just don't see that happening. We're gonna have a variety of product. And quite frankly, this is better than having zero lot lines and putting these homes together. We're making amends to make some space. You know, this is a transitional product, as you said, going, I mean, we're, we're on an intersection of a major highway at this point and we're a stone's throw from the highway. And we're talking about residential constru-, single-family residential construction and being able to make that work. I very much understand, we don't want every house packed in there, but the reality of the product being variable-sized width and depth, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna work itself out as it did in Rivera.
And I, I appreciate that. I hope that you can appreciate the perspective up here also. Even if we don't go to a five foot, seven foot, I would be comfortable with a percentage. A percentage of the homes cannot be 10-foot apart between the two, two homes. That gives you flexibility. What we're trying to do is make sure that while you maintain flexibility, we maintain comfort in the product. Zero lot lines, I can speak for one. All I have to do is have three more, but zero lot lines was a no. And so-
There's also other flexibilities within that. It's not just the front. It could be in the back where they have a larger bump on the side or an optional bump or something happens. So they're not all gonna appear that way, but.
If you, if you look at the small lots, 60 by 110, when you take away the front yard setback and the rear yard setback, you get 80 feet in depth to build a, to quote, build a house. I don't think we have a house that's 80-foot depth unless it's, unless it's a courtyard with a, with a three-car garage out front. It is hard to, so to answer your question in regard to, I wanna build a home, can I put a patio? I'm gonna say probably 90% yes, without any problem at all. And maybe 100% because 80 feet is a sizable, sizable home on a 60-foot lot. I mean, more than likely that house is gonna be somewhere between 40 and, and 50 feet depth. Am I saying that correct? Yeah. So, you know, you've got a, you still have plenty of room to put patio or decks or other, other outdoor features.
And I suppose what we are trying to get at as a commission is can the development text reflect the vision? Right now, the development text does not reflect that variety.
So I guess what we're kinda saying is if you have a 36-foot wide home, it might be a little deeper. If the home is 44 feet wide, it's probably gonna be a little shallower. So you're gonna have varying side yards. You're gonna have varying rear yards. To, to assume worst-case scenario that we're gonna max out on every lot, I think is unrealistic. I mean, really, I truly do. I understand, I'm very compassionate for your concern. I hear your concern loud and clear.
And Ms. Rumah, I appreciate that. However, we've had applicants recently who came in and said, we didn't know everybody was gonna choose the largest home on every lot. And then we ran into the Boarding Zone of Appeals issue. So that's, again, I would just plead, can we have the development text match the vision? If we can sit down and say, okay, on these 60-foot lots, we're only gonna have a 44-foot product, well, that's a big, that's a big side setback. That's a big rear setback. Can that be a percentage of homes? Can that be reflected? And we're not looking at, hey, we want 20% of these homes to have 70% coverage and the minimum. We're, we're looking for a reasonable product, understanding this is a buffer, understanding, understanding this is a transitional zone. But right now, the development text reads 100% of the homes can have 70% lot coverage, can have five-foot realizable setbacks. And understanding that the drainage and everything else consideration, but, you know, how difficult was it to find a lot that fell into that, well, this one wouldn't work category?
So, how about this? The development standards already have, I'm gonna say, a diversity section. It happens to be architectural diversity, which we want. But is there merit just, is all, is all we're saying here, we want to assure the diversity through the neighborhood? And there's a few choice stipulations to supplement in there? Is that, could that solve this? That's one. Two is, just to put to bed, I guess I'm, I'm trying to dissociate now. I just heard, and Charlie, thank you, the clarification and pointing out that it's a deep lot, right? And should be, should not be problematic is good. I guess I'm going to dissociate it, that from the mental problem we're, we're tethering it to. The five-foot exception at the other scenario, is that going into the setback, five foot into the setback?
So what we're saying is that you would be able, with an at-grade patio, nothing else, not a shed, not a deck, you would be able to encroach five feet at grade into your required rear yard setback. However, if your rear yard contains a drainage easement or a no build line or even a building line, you cannot, in any instance, regardless of whether or not you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, modify that.
So to that, I guess to that scenario, do we need that clause in this? The five-foot encroachment? I mean, if we, if we feel like, if you all feel like the, the lots are adequate with the current 10-yard, 10-foot setback on the, on the rear yard, do you need five additional feet?
The only ones that it affects is the, is the one on the north end because all of the interior lots that, that would be of concern have a drainage easement all the way down. So basically, if you're never allowed to encroach on that, you will always have 20-foot of open space from the edge of any patio. Correct?
Correct. So, I mean, I guess just a way to memorialize this and potentially head off any concerns in the future. If the provision to encroach a required rear yard setback was eliminated for interior lots only and preserved for the larger perimeter lots, would that be acceptable?
Explain, explain why we're preserving it?
For the larger lots, yeah. That they can encroach five feet. I mean, yeah.
I don't know if this is necessarily an issue we need to address as far as us being a developer. I, I think whether you have a 150-foot lot that's 300 feet deep and you build a huge house, you still could have that problem.
Yeah.
You know, I, I guess on a smaller lot, maybe that problem's gonna exist more. But that's a city of Dublin issue that you, and I have compassion, I'm sure you face that.
To it, to-
I've had customers not understand that until after and talk to us about it. And, you know, I understand exactly where you're going with it. But we don't need any encroachments into these areas as far as I'm concerned.
Which is, which is to say that the, the building setbacks as they're currently drawn on, on EMHNT's drawings are comfortable?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just take the, I'd take the encroachment out then because what's the point? I mean, if that's our concern is they're gonna get too tight up next to each other, that's, to me, is-
I guess the only reason it might have been put in there is so the Zoning Appeals wouldn't be flooded with these requests. But I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Okay, so, so then can we address side setbacks? So then, Mr. Rumah, looking to you, as far as right now, the development text is written, five-foot side setback across the board. Is there anything that you would feel comfortable with, knowing that, you know, we might not, but is there anything that you would feel comfortable with, understanding what your vision is and what we're asking for?
Just trying to think how to achieve that without being too limiting.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? See what you think of it? Since the average for everybody else has been six foot, that's what we've been doing in density. What if we allowed you five foot, but no two houses could be closer together than 12-foot apart? In other words, you can just shift, you can shift these.
I think maybe a percentage in the 60-foot lot, I checked in the 60-foot lot section.
I would go percentage also.
I think when we look at the 60-foot lots, let's address the 60-foot lots. I don't think the larger lots are gonna be this issue, right? I think we're looking at the 60-foot lots primarily. I think if you look at a percentage, some number, and I'm trying to think of a way to make that reasonable so we don't get too boxed in, but allowing a certain percentage to-
Yeah.
That criteria, I guess.
It's, it's that narrowness in between for service and everything. We've just seen it come back as a problem. So it's kind of been our, I believe, we have been saying that we, 12-foot in between is where we'd like to, where we'd like to land.
In the buffer zone, I would agree. I think 14-foot, the six and eight is where we've been going in the more interior to the city. But this is a buffer zone, so I would feel comfortable with that. And then as far as percentage.
So just to maybe interject about a percentage of lots being required to have a minimum distance between structures and not all of the lots. As, those types of regulations are easy to administer upfront when somebody gets a building permit. But then you think about, you know, five, 10 years down the road, somebody wants to modify their home. It becomes very challenging to know which of those 100 lots, which 30% were designated as allowed to have that minimum distance between structures and which ones were not. And so really, the only way to regulate something like that is to do it by section or subarea. So we can define a geography where that's applicable, but we can't pick a raw percentage number. So there are a few, a few options. You can say, every house has to have a minimum distance of 12 feet between structures. No house has to have any minimum distance between structures. They just have to meet setbacks. Or we can say, perimeter lots have this standard and interior lots have this standard. Or if you want to be even more specific as to interior lots, you can say, all the interior lots are divided into categories A, B, and C, and lots A are only required to meet this provision. So we have to kind of drill down into how we want to, to do it because down the road, another planning commissioner or another BCA will be administering it.
Nikki, you've gone through this, you've done this a million times. There has to be a simple way for us to get, to get to the point where we're going. This 10-foot between is not enough.
I mean, I would, um, sorry, I don't wanna discuss without them, but I would recommend 12 feet between structures across the board. That way you have variability. I mean, if you're trying to encourage that homes be sited one way or another.
So the only way that I can understand to accomplish that would be the five-foot setback, but no two homes should be, can be closer together than 12 feet. That's the only thing that provides the-
That's correct.
Numbers, but still the variety.
Correct. So, I mean, just playing that out. Say somebody puts their house on the five-foot line, then whoever pulls the building permit next door has to shift their house
to meet the seven.
Seven feet. Is that seven? Seven feet.
I believe the confusion was the six-foot call out. And so I think we're okay with five, seven.
But you know, the devil's in the details and I don't wanna create a consequence that doesn't make the comprehensive look of your development look as good as it could. So it's very easy for us to say, I really wanna think about this because what, sometimes what you wish for, you don't get, right? So I would have to, I'd have to defer to landscape architects to, or Kim. So, I, I would have to, I'd have to defer to landscape architects, to, or Kim, to help me understand that if we did that, is that gonna make the balance of the street look crazy and goofy? Because you want, I mean, we're only talking maybe a foot, but, but, but you know what I'm saying? We're trying not to get packed sardine houses, and, and we're trusting that, that these widths, which aren't in the tax, the 36 to 44, it's not in the tax, so you could change it, right? So, this is where we stand, and you can help us get there, but we gotta get there.
So, we're thinking there's, along these lines, 25% of lots will meet the criteria of a minimum of five, and, you know, 12 feet between the houses. You know, some type of criteria like that, where we're at least pushing that boundary a little bit. I think naturally it's going to occur, and to your point, I don't think, you know, you start to limit things too much, all of a sudden, you don't get what you really wanted, and, and that, that had the wrong effect. What we're trying to do is, I hear you, to create less, a little less dense-looking product, but with the variety of products we're gonna have, or anybody would have, we have to have diversity in what we're doing, that's part of our text. You're gonna have different products and different houses next to each other. I think that's a, that happens naturally. If we wanna put a parameter on it that's not too limiting, I think we could work with something along those lines.
I believe there was a side discussion going on, so Ms. Martin called out administratively, percentages are very difficult. They're easy in the initial discussion, and then anyone wants to modify their home, and then it's the, well, were you one of the, or were you one of the, you know, A or B homes? And so, that was the, the discussion going on as, as we continued through the meeting.
I, I think along those lines as well, we're not, you're talking about a few feet here or there, nobody in the long run's ever gonna know the difference. You're talking about smaller lots, I know we're used to larger lots, we're talking about single-family construction, not multifamily, we, you know, we, we've tried to present this in such a way to make sure that we, we had detached product, and at that corner, we're really striving to make that happen, and I think we've done a good job to make that happen, and I think, at the end of the day, even if your worst case came true, it's, it's gonna be a beautiful community, and it's, there, there's no way that every house is gonna be 10 feet apart, it's just not gonna happen.
How wide is your widest home?
Uh, the ones we're planning on, the 60-foot lots would be 44 feet.
How narrow is your narrowest lot?
Thirty, oh, narrowest lot, 60 feet. Well, but that doesn't, well, the problem with that, you could say, well, let's make those side yards, but what if we have a four-foot bump to the kitchen? Or they wanna put a two-foot bump on the side of the garage to allow for more storage in the two-car garage? We're gonna have those options that, you know, you start to play with things, all of a sudden, you don't get what the, the folks really want. We have to provide product that people wanna live in these days, and we've seen these options, we, we know what we need to design, and those things happen.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm still looking at that 44 to 60, that 16-foot with 12-foot setback, you can still do your four, four-foot bump out to your kitchen, you can still do your two-foot extension to your garage.
A lot of folks want side-load garages.
So, can I make a proposal? Because this is all great dialogue. This is all great dialogue, and I feel like we're all headed in the same direction, we're just not able to solve the problem here this evening, and I know that, I know that we can. So I guess I would recommend that the applicant work with the city prior to city council consideration of the rezoning to establish a setback diversity program.
Can I make a, just offer an opinion?
Please.
The difference between 10 feet and 12 feet is not a big deal. I don't think it's, visually will not make a big difference, but if you want to, if, if you're most concerned about the 65-foot lots, that there's a square footage of those lots, could you say that on lots that are less than 7,150, you need to have a 12-foot setback? All right, 6-foot on each, for those lots?
Can I make a?
What's that?
Might I suggest that we just agree to five-foot minimum, 12-foot between houses?
I'm good with that.
And we can move on to something?
I'm good with that.
Else?
Five-foot minimum, but 12-foot between houses.
What about the rear setback?
The rear setback, I believe that we, we covered.
Stay in. We, we nixed the five-foot encroachment.
So there's no encroachment.
And the patio is included, it has to be.
Your microphone.
Has to be in the building, line of the house.
It counts as coverage, yes.
So.
Patio, decks, all of that is lot coverage.
Ms. Martin, could you present the, there we go. Okay.
I, I, that's gonna be in the text, I assume, right?
Those out separately? Yeah.
Is that, that's in the text, right? That will be in the text if we do it.
The pad, the, you don't need to articulate the patio, it's a hardscape, so it, it's in the def, it's in the city definitions.
It's in the general zoning code definition.
Because you understand that, that, that Mr. Rumah's developments will include other builders.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So we're, we're calling out in the development text, and I'm having Ms. Martin break them out individually, so that we can review them and make sure that all of our concerns are covered. So just to go through them again, as, as Ms. Martin puts them together, the encroachment's being removed.
Yes?
Encroachment. The encroachment's being removed, the side setbacks are remaining at a minimum setback of five foot, however, 12-foot must be retained between houses. We have the removal of trim allowed, so we're specifically excluding the foam trim at ground level, that it will not be used at ground level.
What about thin brick?
Oh, thin brick is one that we didn't.
We should get rid of thin brick.
I, I didn't count a four on that one. Yeah. I just needed to make sure, I just need to make sure with the commission, we have four. Okay. All right. Looking back to the applicant, that's one thing that we didn't discuss. The commission has a majority of commissioners who would like to remove the thin brick. Is there significant pause with that?
I'm sorry, I was reading the side yard language.
So, just calling out one of the, one of the items we didn't discuss with you as the applicant, the commission has support to remove the thin brick, that is something that, that we would not be supportive of.
I, I guess I refer back to the appearance code, is that something that Dublin would wanna remove from the appearance code? I, I know we've had one situation on a hotel, maybe, that it was less than applicable, but when we have our masons do it, we have not had that issue, and quite frankly, this isn't a widely-used product. Maybe it, maybe, I guess what I also heard was it doesn't look as rich, and if you wanna strike it from the development, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. And yes, staff, if we could bring that back as a holistic item, we would appreciate that. All right, and then, let's see, we have those items. Ms. Martin, you covered signage in the very original portion, and there was some history behind those three signage items, could you just touch on that again?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the 2006 interchange plan contemplated providing access to the post-preserve neighborhood through this site. At that time, there was no conception that this was going to be developed in the near term, and therefore, with the closure of post-preserve, city council said, we would like to provide post-preserve identity on Highland Crowe. Now that ODOT has worked with the city of Dublin to accommodate the retention of the post-preserve entrance on Post Road, there's no need to relocate that sign. So now, staff is recommending, as set forth in the development text, that one sign be permitted per entrance on Highland Crowe Road, and then the size and height are simply per code.
So looking to the commission, I know there was expressed some concern about that, looking to the rest of the commission, expressions of concern?
I would just ask if the 20 square foot is what all the other developments are allowed up and down Highland Crowe, or what they did?
It's certainly what they're permitted. I do not believe in all cases that's what they did. All of these sign details are finalized with the final development plan, and honestly, many developers opt to do something that's smaller, more tasteful, more integrated into the landscape entry feature. So you would get to see every detail of that when this comes back.
As my opinion for, for commission and Mr. Rumah to think about, it's a rural roadway. If it doesn't look like a commercial sign, or a great big monument sign on a bunch of stone, if it has a flavor that really matches your development, we would be, I would be very pleased, I can't speak for the others, but that's what I would hope you would come back with.
And so it's just important to remember that the preliminary development plan in the development, development text is preserving the opportunity to have three signs, it is not compelling the developer to do that. So they are compelled in the development text to bring forward a sign plan, and then ultimately, the, the planning and zoning commission would make a comprehensive determination on whether it's appropriate.
Wonderful. Ms. Martin, could you re-present the items? I then ask the commission to review those items, to also, Mr. Rumah, to review those conditions, express any concerns or clarifications that would be desired, and then we will move forward.
Okay. So we have the six previous conditions that were recommended in the staff report, plus four additional conditions, for a total of 10 conditions.
I have one more.
Okay, Ms. Fox.
I'm only saying this for the record. I, I said this at the last one, the historic, the historic pieces. It is one thing to ask a consultant to give us a opinion, and then the opinion is to preserve them, because they could be on the National Register of Historic Places. On our architectural review board, if we're gonna demolish something, we expect to see that it actually does deserve demolishing, and that requires some data, some evidence, some financial analysis, and all we've heard tonight is that we just think it should go, it's not affordable. And, and looking at these pictures, these are well-preserved milking barns, and the consultant said that it should stay together as a package, and it's called out in the community plan, so it doesn't meet the community plan, to preserve these historic structures. I understand that the flavor here is not to preserve them, but I will honestly tell you, I don't understand why. So, I'm just going on record in saying that if we're gonna get a consultant's opinion, then I would like to have contradictory, or the contrary, data that supports a reason why you would destroy a package of five perfectly good historic properties that would deserve the National Register of Historic Properties designation, because we need a larger stormwater sewer, pond. So, I, if you wanna talk about that, you can, but if not, I'm on the record.
Just as a follow-up to that, now, there is no reason why, if the city felt an interest in preserving all five buildings as a package, that the city could not work with the applicant to acquire the land, and then jointly or otherwise, an amended, amended development plan come before the commission for discussion and, and continuation. Is that a correct statement, or am I off in left field?
So, the preliminary development plan that you're making a recommendation on this evening preserves the ultimate flexibility for the city to design the public park as a city project to the extent that parks and recreation and city councils see fit. There are some constraints, and portions of historic structures that interfere with stormwater management will not be able to be retained. Should you recommend approval of the preliminary development plan and approve the final development plan?
Now, for clarification, should we recommend for approval and the city council pass, or should we recommend for approval period?
And the city council pass, yeah.
So the city council essentially will see this and has the opportunity to poll, and then I am comfortable moving forward. Any other discussion? All right, at this time, understanding the 10 conditions that we see on the items, I will entertain a motion for 21116Z, the rezoning preliminary development plan item.
Move to approve with the 10 conditions?
Second.
Thank you, I have a first and a second. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
I'm voting no, simply on the historic piece.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Sner.
Is absent.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Crimes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And on case 21117PP, preliminary plat, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
With the one condition?
Thank you, I have a first and a second.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Crimes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and thank you this evening. Mr. Rumah, it's always a pleasure to see you, have a fantastic evening, and, and thank you for spending time. And then, Minari, is that how you say your last name? Thank you, Ms. Minari, for joining us, and Ms. Brown as well. Your time is appreciated.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I believe we are on to case four, Bridge Park, Block F, the Bailey at 4351 Mooney Street, 21-034CP for a concept plan. This application is a request for the construction of a six-story, age-restricted, hybrid podium residential building consisting of 87 units and associated site improvements. The 1.77-acre site is zoned Bridge Street District, Sciota River Neighborhood, the site is northwest of the intersection of Dale Drive with Banker Drive. Mr. Ridge, we'd like to welcome you to this evening, and I'll turn the time over to you for our case presentation.
Great, thank you, and yeah, good evening. As was mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a concept plan for a six-story, age-restricted podium apartment building in the Bridge Street District. The 1.77-acre site is highlighted in yellow on your screen, is zoned Bridge Street District, Sciota River Neighborhood, and is located northwest of the intersection of Dale Drive and Banker Drive. Additionally, this is within Block F of the Bridge Park development. The zoomed-in version of the same area provides a bit more context to the immediate surroundings. To the north, you'll see the Spring Hill Suites, under construction, this photo, but actually recently completed. To the west is the Block B, Mooney Street Garage, to the south is an existing car dealership, and then to the east is a Cota Park and Ride.
I apologize, Mr. Ridge, we're shuffling papers, making sure that we have the proper paperwork, if we could pause just a moment. Thank you, Mr. Ridge.
So you all are likely familiar with the Bridge Street District review process, but just as a recap, it does lay out, the Bridge Street District Code lays out a three-step review process. So what's before you all this evening is a concept plan, which, as outlined on the screen, really intends to outline the character and nature of the proposed development, including building massing, open space location, and street network. Step two is a preliminary development plan, so that's really intended to ensure block layout, street location and design, and open space locations meet the intent of the VST Code, and then that third step is the final development plan, and that's really where you're gonna see all of the final design, landscape, furniture selection details. The Bridge Street District Code also provides the Planning and Zoning Commission with the latitude to approve the combination of steps two and three, and so that request is before you this evening. Staff is supportive, given that the block is our, excuse me, is already established, the street network is established, and additionally, a portion of the block is already constructed and developed. So these photos provide a bit of context to the existing conditions of the site. You can see here, it's largely undeveloped, with the exception of the northwest corner, there is an existing utility enclosure. You may be able to tell, too, there is a pretty significant change of grade from east to west, and additionally, in the right-hand photo, you'll see the recently completed Spring Hill Suites Hotel. Hill Suites Hotel. So a bit of case history, you'll likely recall this was before the Planning and Zoning Commission in July of this year, and in informal capacity. And so at the time, Planning and Zoning Commission members were largely supportive of the height and of the use, although they did express concern with the amount of parking and open space provided. Additionally, members encouraged a pedestrian-friendly street scape along Winder Drive, as well as a reduction in the auto court area, and encouraged activation of Dale Drive. So what you see here is the proposed site plan. Again, the applicant is proposing a six-story podium apartment building with a total of 87 age-restricted units. Included in the footprint of this building is approximately 3,200 square feet of lobby, fitness, cafe, inflex space, and additionally, a 92, 92-space structured parking garage is located on the first floor. You can see on the left-hand side of the site, which would be the west side of the site along Mooney Street, there is one vehicular access provided into the structured parking garage, and then additionally, you'll notice a sizable auto court to the north, open spaces on the north side and south side of the site, as well as a centrally-located residential amenity area. So the podium apartment building type is a permitted building type in this zoning district, but it does require a waiver, in this case, because of its location adjacent to, across the street from, an unlined parking structure. So specifically talking about that Block B, Mooney Street Garage. Additionally, future consideration of a conditional use is required to permit a ground-level parking structure with unoccupied or unlined space. You'll notice here on the site plan, the activity generating uses are primarily on the north and south sides of the site, and so in order to create a pedestrian-oriented street scape along Dale Drive, staff is recommending that the applicant relocate a portion of the common spaces, so again, that kind of flex space, fitness center, those types of spaces along the Dale Drive frontage. Additionally, you'll notice on the, especially on the south side of the site, the building is set back much further than the other frontage, much more than on the other frontages, rather. So that actually requires a waiver to the required build zone requirements and front property line coverage requirements, and staff is supportive of that, to allow that building siting kind of where you see it today. Another thing to point out, the Mooney Street elevation is actually, it's hard to see on the site plan, but it is approximately one foot outside of the required build zone. So as shown, it's at approximately four feet, and is required to be between 5 and 20. So staff is recommending that the applicant modify that elevation to be brought within the RBZ, and then additionally, that that portion of the building be revised to accommodate a five-foot required landscape buffer. Finally, the applicant should also continue to work with staff to ensure appropriate vehicular access is provided from Mooney Street. You can't see here, but there's actually a curb cut across the street, providing access to the Block B Garage. And so staff is concerned that those are not in alignment with one another, and it's just recommending that the applicant continue to work with us on that alignment. So again, same site plan here, to talk through the proposed open spaces. A variety of open spaces are provided on the north and south sides of the site. Based on the use and number of units proposed, approximately four tenths of an acre are, of an acre of open space are required for the site. And so the applicant has indicated that approximately three, sorry, .38 acre of open space are provided. Staff is, and obviously, that is below the required amount. Staff is concerned, though, that some of these open spaces may not fully meet size, dimension, or design programming requirements. So essentially, staff is recommending that the applicant continue to work with us on providing those details, so we can confirm one way or the other. Additionally, staff is recommending approval of a waiver to the open space requirement this evening. Staff is supportive of this waiver, as previous iterations had called for potentially allocating open space from Block G for this block of development. But staff is concerned that the, over time, the kind of piecemeal approach could become difficult to administer, much like with the last case. And then, in terms of the proposed parking, so this residential component is required a total of 53 spaces. That does include a 10% reduction due to its proximity to a public transit stop. So again, that COTA park and ride is directly across the street. The applicant is proposing 93 spaces, that includes 92 structured, as well as one on street space. The building immediately to the north, Spring Hill Suites, Building F1, is required 180 spaces. So with a previously-approved parking plan, they were actually permitted a reduction in required parking, and allowed for, that parking plan allowed for the use of 14 on-street spaces, as well as 142 excess spaces in the Block B Garage. And so moving forward, a similar kind of situation, a new parking plan would be required to be approved in this case. So before you are conceptual elevations, specifically of the north and east elevations, you can see the building proposed is contemporary in design and includes an angular roof system to provide visual interest. Without having final material details, it does appear as though the building is clad in a combination of brick, vertical siding, and metal paneling. Staff is concerned with the conceptual architecture, primarily with the east Dale Drive elevation, as this does front a principal frontage street, and would be expected to contain a, an elevated architectural standard. Additionally, these are purely conceptual, so with a preliminary development plan and final development plan, a full building type analysis would be required. Additionally, on these elevations, you can see that the building is proposed at a full six stories in height. So the podium apartment building per code is permitted to be between three stories in height and four and a half stories in height. So a waiver is required to permit that additional story and a half. Based on the discussion at the informal review, as well as the existing height of the Spring Hill Suites, staff is supportive of this waiver. And additionally, too, with the four-story height of the garage across the street, it's believed that this will create a visual interest, rather than having, you know, a four-story garage, as well as a four-story podium apartment building. So really, many of those same things apply to these other two elevations here. And then the applicant did provide proposed character images. And so with that, staff is recommending six, approval of six waivers tonight. So the first being for incompatible building types, again, allowing for that relationship between a podium apartment building and a parking structure. Another waiver to the building siting requirement, specifically, the required build zone must be between 5 and 20 feet. Again, on the southern portion of the site, it is likely to be much more than that. Similar situation with the front property line coverage. Along Banker Drive, it is going to be outside of the RBZ, and therefore not meeting the 75% minimum. Again, the waiver to the height, which staff is also recommending approval of for the previously stated reasons. And then finally, the open space dedication, again, allowing for a reduction in the required open space. And I apologize, there's one more. This one is to the parking and loading requirement. So this would, this request is to allow an entrance into the parking structure that is not on a rear or side facade. Technically, the, the Mooney Street facade is a front facade, but staff is supportive as there is a similar condition directly across the street. And so this was reviewed against all applicable criteria, and again, staff is recommending approval of six waivers, the concept plan with conditions, and then of the request to combine the preliminary development plan with the final development plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, and the development team is also in attendance this evening to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Looking to the commission for questions, Ms. Fox.
Has the style of the architecture changed much since the first concept plan?
So it is conceptual at this point. From what we've seen, it's not entirely changed, but I would let the applicant maybe speak more to that, the specifics of the changes.
Okay. And, I'll just hold on.
Mr. Supalak?
Help me understand, I'm sorry, the five, between 5 and 20 feet?
Yeah, so every building type has a required build zone. So for this one, the building is required to be built between five feet setback from the, from the right-of-way property line and 20 feet. So in this case, it's, waivers are required just because of how the building's sited, but additionally, that's why staff is recommending that the Mooney Street elevation be actually moved back.
Got it, and that, and that's the one that's four feet?
Correct, so it's actually, yeah.
Other questions for staff at this time? So, Mr. Ridge, just in, in relation to, I'm reading through the minutes, and I, I read Mr. Fishman call out, the, the mass of the building was just very large. And I'm reading my comment that, you know, I had concern with, I was not supportive of the reduction in parking nor the open space, but reducing the size of the building would mitigate that. Has the building been reduced at all since the last time we saw this?
So purely speaking, in terms of units, no. In terms of square footage, I'd maybe defer to the applicant on that.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ridge. And I would like to invite the applicant up. We also have someone on public comment. Is this someone from the public, or is this someone from the team? So I have a Russ Carber?
With the team.
With the team, fantastic. Just wanted to make sure I, same with the last group. So, if members of the, whomever is going to be spokesperson this evening, if you would like to come forward, please state your name and your address for the record. Mr. Hunter, could you turn on the microphone?
Russ Hunter, 6640 Riverside Drive, Suite 500, Dublin 43017. So I'm, I'm actually going to let everyone else speak, but I wanted to say hello, good evening. Also, wanted to quickly say, and when we, when we started Bridge Park, one of the things we talked a lot about in the beginning was diversity of demographics, so we're really, really excited to be partnering with Friendship Village on this particular product. And we have Friendship Village's executive director, Rita Doherty. I wanted to introduce her, let her introduce herself, I guess, and, and a few words about why, why we think this is such a great idea, and then we'll let the design team really kind of get into talking about the things that they've done to react to the conversations that we had at the informal.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, and welcome, Ms. Doherty.
Good evening, my name is Rita Doherty, 6,000 Riverside Drive, Dublin 43017. So I'm very happy to be here tonight. We are so thrilled to be partnering with Crawford-Hoyne for this Bailey project at Bridge Park. As you know, Dublin is, one of the big initiatives for Dublin is the Forever Dublin Concept, where our residents can stay in Dublin. And at Friendship Village, we are very happy to be able to kind of enhance our, our footprint and be able to kind of develop our mission a little bit more in this Bridge Park project. So this concept will take a lot of what we do at Friendship Village of Dublin and bring it into the Bridge Park component. It will be a rental product, so our community is a life plan project, and so we're really happy about it. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any questions from the commission for Ms. Doherty? Thank you. All right. Looking to the commission for questions for the design team. Any questions? Ms. Fox?
Well, you know, I, I made this comment the last time. I think we are excited about seeing Forever Dublin come into Bridge Park. I think it is a great use of the space, it's a good, it's a good opportunity. And my concern is a couple of things. One is diversity of architecture. Secondly, quality of life for seniors, convenience. If you're going to be in a high-rise, do you have the opportunity to enjoy a nice balcony, a, a great place for placemaking, landscape amenities, you know, activities that bring social engagement? So my question is, and I, I would meet your demographic for a Friendship Village. To me, it seems as if the building needs to become like a bowl, in order to let the sunlight into the space that you've so beautifully designed, that when you have a rectilinear building that has no sense of movement coming into that mid-piece, it seems to me you miss a great opportunity for outdoor living in an urban environment. So I, I feel that it is, it is too much of a cookie cutter feel to just have a U-shaped rectilinear building. And even though we have a little widening on the outside edge, I think there's still opportunity. And I would ask you what you think about when you're thinking about senior living in an urban environment?
First off, my name is Joe Pax, I'm an architect with MA Architects, 775 Yard Street, Columbus, Ohio. Ms. Fox, thanks for the question. I think basically, when we were doing site studies for the project, we were looking primarily at solar angles and what that meant for the residents, but also for this being a courtyard building, where indeed we have a secure interior courtyard. The building was faced to the south to really actually capture the amount of maximum solar energy and vitality in that green space inside the amenity terrace. And we, with our studies, we've conducted, shade is there in the late evenings, so when residents want to go out, and we have on that amenity deck itself, with quality of life, that is a lot of outdoor seating space, bocce courts, active, so this is an active adult population. Covered amenity terrace, like a pavilion is there also, barbecue grills, that kind of thing. So in the evening, that sunlight is going to get kind of tempered by the building on the west, actually, make it a little more hospitable to be out there on that space at that time, so that was a consideration there. The one other point that you were asking about balconies, so each unit has a generous balcony that is facing out. So it's whether those units that are onto the terrace themselves, they're looking down on the terrace, but all around the perimeter, all sides of the building, the residential units, two-bed units, three-bed units, have generous balconies that are six feet deep to basically encourage them to be out, table, two seats, easily to, to, you know, occupy that balcony comfortably. Now, as far as the, the architecture itself and the profile, you know, that really, again, we were looking at the, the opening as trying to capture light, rather than we were looking at the, the opening as trying to capture light rather than having the, the building cascading down. So, I mean, and then there's, that was really the orientation, I guess, all I can say, was why that decision was made.
Is it possible to have a larger-than-six-foot balcony? Because a balcony's a balcony, but, you know, older people have people over, you know, they, they, they sometimes want to sit outside in an urban environment, even though, and they, they would go down. I'm just, I'm looking for a little diversity in, in what we're seeing in Bridge Park when it comes to these kinds of things, and a little more unique interest when it comes to how you use these outdoor spaces. I don't know that it would matter so much, except that this is a senior-living facility, and many seniors, even though they're active, will probably really use these balcony spaces. And, and I just feel like that there's got to be, there, there should be something a little bit more imaginative in the way of, of architectural style on this.
Well, I can tell you that there are units that we have that are L-shaped configured balconies on them, on the interior of the courtyard, so they're much more generous than we would typically see in an apartment building. So that's, that is there to accommodate that also and provide some additional seating space, activity space out there, tables, that kind of thing. And then the other thing we're looking at, though, is 10 to 15 feet width, and that's highly unusual. So what we're basically doing, what you see in the renderings, are balconies that are much wider than our conventional, you see at Bridge Park, which are typically about eight to 10 feet wide. So they're, they're just much smaller, but these are, these are being stretched a little longer. Particularly the units that are on the ends, the three-bed units that are larger units have, and what you're seeing here in these elevations are primarily the side units that are two-bed units, but those on the, on the ends, those are the ones that are going to get much more generous. It's harder to see in the rendering there, but, but you can kind of see in the center view there of a, one of the wide balconies that are there at the top elevation.
So, Mr. Pax, for clarification, on that lower image, the one on East Dale Drive?
Yes.
On the right-hand side, before you get to the, the edge of the building, where you see the wider, are those two balconies, or is that one balcony?
That is one balcony, and you're seeing one beyond in that view.
And you're seeing one beyond it, so it is, I'm looking at two.
That is an offset.
And I, I was actually hoping that it would wrap around and, and therefore be what Ms. Fox was talking about. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Way?
Thank you. So, you know, this is a real challenging building, because it's a, it's a podium building that's in a slope, which leaves a lot of edges that aren't yet resolved. And as I look at the renderings and the elevations, I, I see these, the situations where you do have, you know, basically it's the parking garage exposed, but you've sealed it off. And where you have a park, you know, you can mitigate it with landscape, and I think the plans have, have really tried to tackle that. So I'm, I'm concerned, or I'm, I'm interested to hear your viewpoint on how, how you've been thinking about the treatment of that parking level as it's exposed around the site. And that's, I'm going to make this a two-parter, because it kind of goes hand in hand. I think Dale Drive and Banker Drive are kind of really two very important street edges in Bridge Park, and especially the corner of them. And I think I mentioned that at the last meeting, about that's going to be a gateway corner, but it's also then, how do you activate that in a kind of an awkward part of Bridge Park, that's not really the center of attention? But activate that and draw people down to the, the center. So I'm, I'm curious to, some of your thinking about that.
Okay, thank you for the question. Specifically, you requested that we move the building further to the north, providing more public amenity space on the Dale-Banker intersection. So that is what we did. Actually, that's 30 foot that we've pushed that wing, that what's basically the, the east wing of the building has been, we've taken 30 feet out of the length of that wing, basically, and, and pushed it back. And by so doing, that greatly increased that public amenity space on the intersection of Banker and Dale. So you see that curved sidewalk through there, that is all public space. The walkway that you see running parallel are basically, it's going into that gray area that you see, that trapezoidal gray area is a public terrace area, a raised public area, but that is to the general public, that will have benches and seating, planer walls, but that is accessible to the general public, and that then access back down onto the Banker sidewalk. So we, really, we were trying to, I just wanted to address first off, the, the reduction in the building area, which was originally at 214,000 square feet, is now at 195,000 square feet. So there, there was about the 20,000 square footage taken out, and we knew that was the area that we had to do it, to try and get that front gate emphasis and, and distance away from that intersection with the landscape amenities. To your question about the parking and what we did in how, in that treatment, it is fully exposed along Mooney, but from the corner, the, what is basically the southwest corner at Banker and Mooney, that ascends 20 feet up to the intersection of Dale and Banker. So we've got terraced areas there with the, with retaining walls, landscaped well-appointed with trees and everything else going up to that, that kind of gray area, that public plaza area that I just was mentioning. The, basically, the garage is diving down into the ground, so it's completely underground by the time we get up to the, the west or the southeast corner of the building there at the intersection of Banker and Dale. So the garage is gone, we basically almost have a five-story building for all intensive purposes at that point. So that is one thing, we didn't emphasize that enough in our informal presentation, could have caused some confusion, but basically, the building is, is digging into the ground there, so we are, in essence, reducing the perceived elevation and height of the building in so doing that. But the natural grade and topography slopes down on Dale towards Winder Drive, and thereby the, the garage is starting to reveal itself as it, it's going towards the north. However, at the intersection, at the, at the northeast corner of the building there, towards that, you can see pointing towards the Winder and Dale intersection, that is still about four or five feet underground at that point. So we are still, the grade is, is working its way around and towards the entryway into the building, but it's, that's the natural slope of the topography, what the existing roads are giving us. So that was primarily one reason why we are opening up all of our amenity space onto that terrace area with the plaza to the north, because we are underground still. And it's a difficult proposition to get anything in there accordingly. So we're more or less putting landscaping and using that as a feature to try and accentuate that flow of the land and, and landscape around that corner. Hope that addressed your question, Mr. Way.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Ms. Ridge, could I have you present the waivers that we're looking at? During our last discussion, when we were looking at an informal review, I, I reread through the minutes from that particular meeting, and, and quite a few of us were looking at the podium building and saying, hey, are we, we generally supportive of this, understanding that the, the first item here is to permit a podium building? So looking back to the commission, as we're at concept plan, now that we have a little bit more details, understanding that there are more steps to come in this process, is the commission generally supportive of permitting a podium apartment building? I'm seeing enough head nods. All right, next item is the building sitting, Mr. Way, this, again, reviewing the, the last comments and then considering all of the discussion this evening, as the discussion from the applicant has talked about the reduction or the pulling back of, of where that building is sitting, does that mitigate some of your concern that was expressed earlier in this meeting?
Yes, and I think it's, again, it has increased the opportunity to do something very special in that corner as we move forward.
Wonderful. The only, the only item that I would call out is, I, I understand that we pulled back and that allowed for us to have more open space. Both Mr. Fishman and myself in the last meeting discussed, we want to meet open space. The item was called out, that anytime we shift open space or use open space on a different block, we're also requiring more walk to get to the level of service that we've decided as, as a city should be permitted in each one of these blocks. So just to call out there, we're not quite there, we're closer, and then staff has expressed the, the concern that even given that we don't quite meet the required open space with this application, even not all of that open, open space may be considered as qualified open space. So again, concept, plan, I, I would like to see the application meet the open space requirement on the block permitted, so.
I agree.
Okay, and I see three other head nods, so, count, I can count, at least the small numbers. All right, the next one is the proper frontage, excuse me, the front property line along Banker Drive and Dale Drive. Mr. Supalak, was this one of your items? I, I don't remember who had highlighted this item, just want to make sure.
I actually was absent last time this came through.
No, 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 I mean, this evening, sorry. This is the, the property line coverage. All right, so looking to the commission, is the commission generally supportive of the reduction in the front property line coverage along Banker and Dale? Seeing head nods. Height, this one, again, was one of the items that two or three or four individuals expressed a little bit of a concern with last time. The call out was, this is adjacent to a hotel product, that because it is a different product, has a, a different height allowable? My concern could be mitigated. I could go with a six-story building if open space and if parking is met. And so I will echo what I said the last meeting, but looking to the commission, am I odd duck, or what does the rest of the commission think?
You know, I, I feel strongly that parking, and it seems like it is, well, I have a question for staff. We have 87 units and only 53 parking spaces. They're seniors, and they, and maybe they don't all have cars. I mean, do they all have cars? Because I don't think any senior wants to walk in the middle of the winter to the parking garage next door.
I think 53 are required and 93 are provided.
91?
53 are required for this residential component, 93 are provided.
93 are provided in the parking garage.
So 92 in the parking structure, one on street.
Can we call out, what's the one on the street?
It's, it's.
Just allowed.
Yeah, it's just one, it's, it's on Mooney Street.
It's where they park the ice cream truck.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, the, the person working at the desk, you know, one.
Yeah.
Is it because the parking garage ran out, and we're using one-on-street to qualify, or help us understand?
Yeah, one thing I will add is that there actually is a condition of approval to, that with kind of any revisions, on-street parking be retained to the greatest extent practicable. So there is one shown right now that could actually increase.
And, and could I ask you, Spring Hill Suites, they're allowed to park in this garage?
I would defer to the applicant, it's my understanding that that's not the case.
Okay, I was thinking that when I read it, that the Spring Hill Suites was, that this F-block had X amount of parking that would be available to it when it was completed, and that Spring Hill Suites allowance of parking, maybe I'm wrong, allowance of parking was included in the remaining outside of the 53 that we're dedicating to Friendship Village, which would reduce the amount of parking available to the Friendship Village. You tell me, Russ.
So the, the parking underneath the building, underneath the building we're talking about is for Friendship Village only? So it would not, the Spring Hill Suites would not be parking in this garage?
Okay, so that would give the remaining extra spaces. Oh, okay, all right, that helps? Thank you.
So, Mr. Ridge, could you clarify? I'm trying to find in this report, that the last report had 91 spaces, and we're talking 93 spaces. The call out from the minutes last time, and Mr. Hunter, I think that you feel that this one, that 91 spaces fit in the parking garage, so I'm, I'm just struggling with math work. So has something changed on the parking garage? Is it 93 for sure?
So the, what you're seeing today, there are 93, there's 92 within the structured parking, and then that includes, the 93 includes the one-on-street parking space.
All right, all right, looking back then to conditions, so podium building, six stories in height. I could be supportive of that, so long as the open space and the parking are met, looking to the rest of the commission?
I, I think it's consistent.
Mr. Fishman?
I worry.
Microphone.
I worry about parking, because old people have cars too, but they also have people that come to take care of them, visitors, construction people. I have personal experience with, with a facility that has cottages in, in this city, and, and I own buildings on the street, and there's constant complaints from my residents that they're parking in front of the mailboxes, and they're parking on the street in front of their houses. So I, I think that you really have to be aware of that there's going to be people visiting these people, there's going to be construction people, there's going to be cleaning people for their apartments, and where are they going to park? That's, that's my concern.
Might I invite Ms. Doherty? Ms. Doherty, you have experience with the individuals who would rent these, these locations.
Yes.
Do you currently have parking requirements in your business plan?
So our experience at Friendship Village of Dublin is that we have about 390 residents, and probably, on average, let's say between 290 and 310 have cars, so it's like really a one-to-one kind of capacity. The other advantage I think we have in the Bridge Park, specifically at the Bailey, is while we have 93 parking spots in the, in the garage, which our residents of Friendship Village would die for those, but we also have a parking garage across the street. So to your point, Mr. Fishman, the associates who are working there, the housekeepers, they will all be coming from Friendship Village, so they, they are contained in that, and they can park across the street. So the families and the visitors, things along those lines, can use the public, public parking within the Bridge Park community.
Coming from Friendship Village?
So the amenities that we are planning for the Bailey, our housekeeper, housekeeping would be an ancillary service from Friendship Village, so we would use our team to do that, maintenance, same thing, security. There'll, there'll be a residential component within the, within the Bailey, so a residential services director who's kind of like the navigator, if you will, I know that, that Forever Dublin uses the term navigator, we also use the term navigator in a little bit of a different component. So from an FTE perspective, a full-time equivalent at the Bailey, it'll be probably around four to six full-time associates that are working at the Bailey, and that's it. So the capacity for parking is really the residents that are living within the Bailey.
What about their family, and, and people coming to service them, like cleaning people?
Yep. So those people.
Friendship Village is going to furnish the cleaning people?
We are, yes. So the Friendship Village team will also furnish the, the cleaning capacity and the maintenance.
In their apartments?
In their apartments.
You'll clean their apartments?
You moving in?
I, I know, we can get into it some other time, but.
It's a good deal, Warren.
Burchston Street, I'm sure you're familiar with Burchston, and that's a constant complaint right now.
You're right, it is, it is a challenge, and I can't wait for the construction to be done.
But it's usually people who are servicing people that have the cottages and so on.
So I respectfully have a different opinion than when you do. So we are, at Friendship Village of Dublin, we are building $100 million master plan, and those people along Burchston, you are very right, that is a little bit of a challenge. Those people are more of our resili construction people who are not able to park in the parking garage or parking spots at Friendship Village, or maybe it's just not convenient for them to park in one of our parking spots at Friendship Village. So that Burchston space is not necessarily for the, our FTEs, our, our, our associates at Friendship Village, they're more for our ancillary construction team.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to discuss the problem on Burchston.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't want that emulated here. So you think there'll be plenty of parking for all the people who service in the company? So you think there'll be plenty of parking for all the people who service and the company that comes to those people with the underground garage?
I do, I absolutely do.
Well, that's.
So, Mr. Hunter, I would just, we've heard a lot about Bridge Park, and I know I've expressed in, in previous meetings, we hear that we have more parking than we need, and we hear that often, and, well, we're going to leverage this other parking because we're overparked. And Bridge Park is not very old, and almost its entire life, we've been in a pandemic where it's not normal. It's not what it was five years ago as far as traffic counts and everything else. So I, I would just advise us all to be very conservative, understand that right now we have 87 units and 93 parking places, that, that's really the six FTEs. So there's no visitors, there's, there's no anything else if we're talking a one-to-one on residential units, and then these six FTEs. So there's, there's not a lot of cushion there, and we have four seasons. And so, with however, I read a statistic the other day, I'm not going to remember it, with however many moisture rainy days that we have, and then the snow days on top of that, people aren't going to walk long distances, they're not going to want to park across the street and walk across the street, especially if there's no, like, covered pass-through.
I remembered this time. So, so yeah, and, and we have talked a lot about, and, and by the way, you know, obviously when we come back for final development plan, we, we will have to do a, a parking plan as a part of that, so we understand that. Interestingly, yeah, you, you know, we, we have gone through a pandemic over, over the last year and a half or so, but what I will, what I will tell you, and I'm thinking specifically B and C blocks, because those are the blocks that are ostensibly complete, right? Like the, the tenants are all moved in, both residentially, we are 100% full right now, we are full occupancy. Office uses within those blocks are also completely full, restaurants with the exception of one, in, you, you saw them the last time, the last time that we were here, is complete. Those restaurants, by the way, have been doing better today, and over the last six months or so, than they were pre-pandemic. So, if you think about the use of, the, the use of Bridge Park as a, you know, if we think about the way it's being used today, and the amount of people that are coming there, it's the most it's ever been, even, you know, 2019 and before, and it's as, about as much as it's going to get when you think about residential and commercial occupancies. If you drive up into the C-block garage.
Minus hotels. I, I don't think you're getting the use out of the hotels. I, I travel extensively for work, I see nowhere near occupancy rates pre.
And, and you would be surprised at where our occupancies are at the Spring Hill and the AC, because we were, we are. And, and I say that, and I, I say that humbly, and, and like I said, it's, it's surprising, but it has really bounced back, especially our two Bridge Park hotels, less so at, say, like the, the H2 that's closer to the freeway. All that being said, you go into the, the, the C-block garage especially right now, and you go up much past the fourth or fifth floor, and they're empty. We've got an entire roof that every time I work out, at noon, I, I look at that thing, and there's not a single car on it at noon, when all of our restaurants are at capacity. You go to weekend events where the place is just hopping, and if you go up, you know, you, you have to go up to the fifth or sixth floor, but there are parking spaces that are gathering dust. And, and so that's something that, that we will, we will want to talk about, because it's a, it's a, it's an asset that we built, it's an investment that, that we all paid for, and, and that we need to use, and we need to utilize to its fullest extent, or we just, you know, wasted millions of dollars effectively. So, when we, when we looked at the Spring Hill in particular, if you recall, we, and you've noticed that there's a, an elevator that was added to that side of the garage, so if you're coming down Winder Drive to the west, there's an elevator directly there. So, the, the walk, if you will, to get from any parking space to either the front door of this building, or the back door of the Spring Hill, is really short, when you consider it's across the street and maybe 50 feet up the hill. So, we think that we're prepared, we know that we have to, we have to bring the proof. We, we know that we have to bring that parking plan and be able to explain why we think that this works, but we very much think that this works.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Ridge, could you re-present the conditions? All right, so we ended at height, any final comments on height? Open space dedication, we covered that, we had general support that we wanted them to meet open space and meet open space with qualified open space. Next one is parking location and loading, any concerns there? Okay. And those are our six waivers. All right, then looking to the commission, it looks like, well, first I'll call just in, in chance that we had some public comment on this item. No, we did not. All right, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the six waivers.
Show move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
Second.
Second, I have a first and a second, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call.
If I may, really quickly, was I understanding that there was general consensus that you would not be okay with the open space waiver?
So, the open space called out here is open space dedication, and so we are not generally supportive of a reduction in open space. So it would be a motion with either an amended six waivers, or, so, so, I don't know, is the waiver stricken if we are requesting that the applicant meet the open space conditions?
Yes, that would be. So the motion that you have in front of you right now is a motion to approve all six waivers.
Understood. So I have a motion on, on the table to approve all six, let's move forward with that motion?
Or you could, somebody could move to amend that motion.
Understood.
To strike waiver number five.
Mr. Ridge, could you put those six back up? All right, looking then, Mr. Grimes, did she make the, the motion, who made the motion? Would you like to amend your motion?
You, you may.
Amend it now?
You can amend it now, and then we don't have to, then we wouldn't be voting down this six motion, instead we would just amend it and then move forward.
Amend to delete five?
Amend to delete waiver number five.
Show move, show amend, and seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Way, thank you, Mr. Grimes, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
So now you're.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Sorry to interrupt. So now your motion in front of you is approval of waivers one, two, three, four, and six.
Show move.
Thank you, Mr..
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes and Mr. Way. Chase, could I have you put those back?
Number five is the one we're striking.
Yep, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that parking count wasn't on there, and so I have parking location and loading on, on the lower side, so I am comfortable. We have a, a motion and a second, Ms. Beal.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Beal. At this time, I would like the commission to review the 13 conditions on the concept plan, and then after we are done reviewing those, I will entertain a motion, I will pause. All right, looking back to the commission, are there any questions on the 13 conditions here for approval of the concept plan?
Can we just walk through them in case there are some comments one by one? Because I, I think particular commission members had particular concerns, I want to be sure that we hear consensus on it.
Wonderful. So, item one, Mr. Ridge, do you just want to review the auto court? I apologize, Ms. Beal, I'm just having him point out the auto court so everyone knows what this first condition is.
Yeah, and so, really what we're looking at is that northern portion of the site, the kind of drive-through auto court area that you're looking at.
Perfect. Any discussion, comments, questions on the auto court condition? Okay?
It doesn't necessarily mean will be reduced, we're just going to work with staff to try to reduce it.
Correct.
I want to hear from Mr. Way.
Mr. Ridge?
This is coming at us fast, so I just want to make sure I don't miss anything. Part of the auto court issue in my mind is the pocket plaza also, they have to be thought of together. So I don't know if that's separate language, or it's already together, but I'd like to add that, if it isn't added.
So, there is an additional condition that essentially, with the reduction of the auto court, the building would move even further, potentially north, creating more space for open space at the southern portion.
I'm referring to the pocket plaza on the north.
Right, so I guess where I'm going is that could potentially be revised to the point where it's no longer an open space, but rather, you know, a tree lawn or something of that sort.
So, Mr. Ridge, if you could put up the 13 items. So I think that two items interplay together with the pocket plaza and the open space, understanding that it has to be usable, it has to meet the definition of open space in that plaza, and I agree with you, Mr. Way, they have to be considered together.
Right.
If we orphan this little section, it holds no value, and we need to shelter the, the auto court and make sure that it accomplishes its goal while still meeting the open space on the other side of the auto court.
I agree with everything you just said.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, next one is the larger public open space, I believe that we are all looking for the same here, including the applicant. The next one is the auto turn analysis for the auto court drop-off area, any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Way?
Could somebody clarify what this, what this is suggesting, the auto turn analysis?
Yeah, so.
Automobile turn analysis?
Exactly, and this is primarily for fire and emergency vehicles, should that auto turn remain, we would want to see that a vehicle could navigate it.
So, so it's my understanding that's a one-way drive, right? So there's no turning, it's flowing through, and I, I don't, I guess you have to do an analysis of that.
I, I think what it's, because that, because that's a drive, they have to be able to make sure that the.
Angles.
Fire could actually get in.
So it's just the standard?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, I was just reacting to turning, because there is no turning.
It is one way, it's one way to the west, and, and the other thing that I just wanted to make sure that.
Emergency vehicle navigation.
That, that everybody understands, we will absolutely work with staff to, to refine this area. The, the concern that James, our civil engineer, has is that as that auto court gets smaller, the, the turning radiuses for the, for that apparatus may not work, but also because the way grades are working through there, we, we may find ourselves in a position where we no longer have an accessible path. Because as, as you, as it gets smaller, you've got less slope, you know, less to, to make up that slope. So, we'll work with them, but that is what we're, we're up against on that.
Understood, and, and I think that the interplay, again, back to Mr. Way's concern on the, the auto court, the open space qualification has to be usable, and so we trust that you're going to work with staff, we're going to meet the conditions of, we need to accomplish the purpose of having an auto court, we need to make sure that public safety is considered for the apparatus movement, we need to make sure the open space can be qualified as open space and meet the code definition of open space. So, I believe under those couple of items, unless you are expressing a concern with the language in the conditions, then I think we're all on the same page.
I might add, I might add, Russ, you, you know how it is, I think we're going for a great park on the south side, so we're suggesting the possibility of, what if the building slides? But if that creates other problems, we'd still be really satisfied with a great park on the south side, that's what we're after, so, you know, it may or may not come to moving the building too much, but.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Next one is the five-foot setback. No concerns. The applicant continue to work with staff on appropriate access on-street parking east side of Mooney, no concerns. Parking plan, we discussed that. Next one is the preliminary development plat stage review, this review to the site, I think we're all good there. Accommodate the required landscape buffer, any concerns? I would echo Mr. Way's comments on the, you know, how is it going to be accomplished on kind of incorporating the parking level while still making it a very visual, visually appealing building? Let's see, interior common spaces along Dale Drive, any concern from the application on number nine?
As was alluded earlier, the grading is a challenge there, and so for an ADA accessibility standpoint, to get any type of access in on, actually on Dale, is quite challenging. So, we were, we were trying to construe what was, you know, being asked, I think there was just really, Dale Avenue being such a prominent roadway, what we could do to make that look as well, you know, as inviting or to the pedestrians walking along there as possible, but we are doing landscape foundation plantings along there, but I just was under, trying to understand with the common area, the limited amount of common space we actually have is just right on the public plaza, that we have that auto drop-off. I mean, that is a large amount of transparency and storefront there, two-story glass storefront at that auto drop-off plaza, but that's the, really the main area for all of our common area that we have in the building, is right there on that north elevation.
So, looking to the rest of the commission, I see maybe half of the length of Dale Drive where it abuts this particular property, I see half of that as those public amenities. We have the, the plaza on the park with the auto park that has just the plantings, not very much useful open space, but on the south side, I mean, that's essentially, it's, it's abutting. Dale Drive, we have three paths essentially in, so staff, is there, is there a particular concern as to why this, this call out here, the interior common spaces along Dale Drive?
Yeah, I mean, really the intent, at the end of, end of the day is to get some sort of activity on the Dale Drive frontage, understanding that obviously there's some, you know, grade, grading concerns there, but really, again, at the end of the day, we're trying to get some sort of activity on that principal frontage street.
And by activity, are you just talking movement? So would the balconies and that sort of thing not qualify for that activity movement, that sort of thing? I, I'm seeing kind of the illustration along Dale, Dale Drive, and there are at least, you know, three on each level.
Yeah, and so, that's a great point, what we're looking for is kind of ground-level activity, and just some sort of activation or interaction with the, with the sidewalk and kind of the public realm, understanding, obviously there are balconies there, but again, we're looking kind of at the ground floor in particular.
Understood, Mr. Way?
I, I just wanted to, I guess, support staff in their exploration of that as an opportunity. I think it's at the end of the building where it's on the park, what could you do, instead of there are two units there, could you do something else that would be engaging with the park, that would provide some kind of activity? That's, that's where one thing could be explored, the other is on the other end, which is actually at the garage level, where you have the handicap spaces, and that's where you have the blank walls right at the entry, and could you do a space there that both engaged Dale and also the, the entry?
I would just wonder if we could revise statement number nine, saying the applicant work with staff, so, rather than a concrete, because we, we understand, and staff, you've done a great job at, at working with applicants to plan out Bridge Park to make sure it's that engaging, and we're not talking building front. to plan out Bridge Park to make sure it's that engaging, and we're not talking building front right next to sidewalk, and therefore you're walking down and all you see is building. That's not very inviting as a pedestrian. So I believe that we understand what you're going after, but we trust that you can engage with the applicant to meet that requirement of movement, activity, engagement. Would you be amenable to that?
Yeah, well, absolutely, we'll work with them. This was honestly the only one that we had some real pause over, and it's just simply because it doesn't work operationally, right? So we had at one point the drop-off on Dale, so you think about, you know, all of those functions that are happening on winder flipping, and we were told that wouldn't work because of the curb cut, we couldn't have the curb cut on Dale. But what that meant was is that, so on that ground level, where everyone comes in the door, you're on level one ostensibly, right? If you were to follow that line, like he was saying, you'd end up underground at that corner. So in order to activate that corner with common area, you've got to do it on level two. Well, on level two, there's a limited amount of common area spaces, amenity spaces, that we're providing, and all of those spaces want to work with the courtyard. Because like we've got, we've got fitness spaces, we've got sort of great room spaces, and all of those open right out onto that courtyard. It's an ebb and flow that happens through those doors, those doors will be operable. And so if you were to take that stuff and move it up to that corner, then you completely disconnect those two spaces, and that doesn't work operationally. So that's, we will continue to see what we can do to make sure that that corner works the way we want to. Just operationally, it would be a real challenge to pull those amenities.
And personally, and I can't speak for six other people, but personally, I think that private activation would be acceptable to me. So private activations, what we're really going for is we don't want the edge of the building abutting a walkway. There needs to be activity engagement, that level of energy in that area. And so that would be my personal opinion, and I would look to the rest of the commission for, and I'm seeing at least three other head nods. All right, Mr. Ridge?
So I did revise that condition number nine to stay, state the applicant work with staff to explore opportunities to revise plans to locate a portion of the proposed interior common spaces along Dale Drive.
As it's not a hard and fast requirement, I would be okay, but we leave the interpretation all to the meeting minutes and everything else. I would recommend an amendment that say the applicant work with staff to explore options to create energy engagement at, you know, along Dale Drive. Okay.
Did I hear you correctly, that specifically at the intersection of Dale and?
No, no, along Dale Drive. I think the same call-out for the location, just a different way to accomplish what you were looking for.
Okay.
Thank you. Garage level, east elevation, no concerns there, essentially applicant work with staff. Then the next one, high-quality design and elevations, I think we're all on the same page there. Additional visual interest on the interior-facing elevations. I think we covered that pretty well. And then the last one is the open space calculations. Any other concerns or items that are not considered in the 13 items as we have amended them? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the concept plan with the amended 13 conditions.
Sure, move.
I have a first and a second. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman? Ms. Wade?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
All right. Last motion on the table, well, excuse me, to be put on the table is to combine the preliminary and final development plans. Looking for a motion.
Sure, move.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes, do I have a second? Prior to taking a vote on this, Mr. Boggs, can you explain the coupling of the preliminary and the final development plans? This would be at future meetings and understood that it would expedite different things. Can you help us understand why we are looking at doing that at the concept plan stage?
So in the Bridge Street District Code, it says that the preliminary development plan may be combined with the final development plan at the request of the applicant by motion of the commission following approval of the concept plan. So doing it, making that motion tonight, having approved the concept plan, allows them to go into that next meeting, having prepared the two together, rather than coming presumably with a, it would moot the whole point of combining them if we waited until another time to make this action, to combine the PDP and the FDP.
But they will be separate motions in the next meeting, right?
Correct, they would be separate motions, but they would be presented to you simultaneously.
This is specific to Bridge Street District. Others, we've combined different preliminary and final into the same meeting before. However, Bridge Street requires a motion to be had.
This is specific to Bridge Street, because while we call them preliminary development plan and final development plan here, it is, while they have the same names, they accomplish different objectives in Bridge Street than they do for our planned districts. Because with your planned districts, the PDP is a recommendation, it goes forward to council for final approval. Here, the PDP, because this ultimately is a form-based code, is more of, we have the zoning in place with Bridge Street, and the PDP is, you know, a greater level of refinement than concept plan, and FDP is a greater level of refinement even than that.
Understood. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have a motion and a second on the table. Yeah, go ahead, Ms.
I'm not, I want to see this thing move forward for Friends Village, I really do. But I think, and I think that we've been pretty open about what we're looking at. I like the idea of seeing a preliminary development plan before the final. I don't know that it, I believe that we have opportunities at that point, and we can move a process through quickly by even doing a preliminary and a final. So I personally don't like the idea of combining them. I think it locks the commission into having to make a final decision with just one look, but that's just my opinion on this one.
Does that, do we have to make a decision on both? Can we just review the preliminary, and if we have comments, then we just stop there, right, and they have to?
We would have to hear or ask the applicant, the other would have to be tabled at the applicant's request. The risk is, the applicant either has a commission that is uncomfortable and therefore votes no, or they request a table and they do two meetings, which is the alternative to combining them.
So why is staff recommending that we do this?
So that the reset process is essentially starting from zero. In this case, we're not starting from zero, the street network is already established, the block is already established, and part of this block is already developed. So essentially, part of that job, so to speak, is done. So we saw it appropriate to, in this case, combine the latter two steps.
So personally, I don't see a risk to the commission, I don't see a risk to the city. I do see a risk for the applicant that they have to come for two meetings. I see a benefit to the applicant that they could need to come for one, however, that is not guaranteed based on the discussion of the commission. I think the commission demonstrates pretty much every meeting that we are willing to discuss and vote on what we feel is appropriate, and so I would support the combining of the two. I would be in support of combining of the two, because that does not guarantee a yes. I don't think that the commission would feel pressured into saying yes because they are combined. I feel that this commission does a very good job at discussing the details, getting into the details, and if the required answer is no, then voting on the required answer as no. And Mr. Hunter, if I could invite you out back up to the podium.
I was going to say, I want to hear from you, one, did you request this? Two, we've worked all together before, how comfortable are you going down this path?
So very comfortable for all of the reasons that Ms. Call just said. I mean, the truth is, is that if we get here and the conversation doesn't go well, we table, and then we come back for that second meeting and we have that conversation again, so it is exactly what you just said. A lot of the things in the preliminary are things that were sort of settled anyway, because the roads are there, so. The other thing that I will say, and this is just practical for us, is that this process is extremely long, right? And if, you know, there used to be two steps to the Bridge Street process, we started the informal, the concept plan was added, and every single time we do this, there's an eight-week review period in between where we submit something, and then we get to stand in front of you and talk about it. And it just, it's taking a really long time to get these projects through, and I don't have to explain why that can be a problem. So in our mind, to be able to combine these and take the chance, right, that we'll get it right the first time, that we've learned the lessons, it seems like there's no risk to either one of us.
Seems like a reasonable explanation to me.
And Mr. Hunter, one thing to call out is you come prepared, and you come with people who are resources who can make modifications should the commission not feel comfortable moving forward, as with some other discussion. So, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Again, I have a motion and a second on the table, is there any further discussion? Could you turn your mic on?
Samples of materials and so on, like they would on, okay, so.
Are there any other items that would make the commission feel more comfortable for the next meeting combining preliminary and final that the applicant?
Nothing else on the agenda?
Nice, I have a first and a second. I would also advocate for a light agenda when this application comes forward.
I'm not advocating right now, but one of the things we didn't really do, I mean, we churned through this, through the list on this project, but we didn't really comment. Is there merit to comment, and I know it's late, is there merit to giving ourselves a moment to comment? So that at least as they are proceeding into the next steps and starting to get more formalized, they have some of that in their ear.
At this point in time, we're looking at concept plan, so we're looking at general conception. I think staff did a great job at laying out some of the fluidity that can exist during the concept plan, but if there are other items that the commission feels should be expressed at the concept plan to prepare the applicant for the preliminary and final coupled, then I think that that merits discussion.
I just worry without the intermediate step, right, that intermediate step allows us to talk a little bit differently, and without that, right.
And I would advocate, we are not going without, we are not going without that intermediate step, we are just doing it on the same night. And if that means that the applicant has to come back for the final step, and the final step cannot happen at that same meeting, then that is the risk that the applicant is taking.
And I'm trying, maybe I'm saying, I think we have a chance to assuage that risk, to mitigate that risk a little bit by at least taking a few minutes to comment.
Yeah, and if it's conceptual, I would wholeheartedly agree. What I don't want to do is I don't want to blend the lines between concept and preliminary in this, does that make sense?
Well, I don't know that any comments that Mark would make would not be helpful to the architect. I would think that would be, I think that would be fine. Personally, I would like to hear the comments, because I would want, I would want you to have every opportunity to be successful when you came back to us.
Certainly, one thing I respectfully can ask, can those comments and suggestions be just written, given to staff to deliver to us, rather than tonight, or does it have to be tonight on formal record?
Unfortunately, that creates some concern, because you'd be hearing from individuals, we wouldn't be able to convene and discuss that. So we, as a commission, could not give you direction, we as individuals could, but that creates a whole world of issues.
Thank you for that clarification. I mean, frankly, I would be very curious to hear his comments, because anything, we've been getting great commentary from the staff, and that's helping us in crafting what we delivered tonight, so. I would, I know the hour's late, that's the only reason I asked the question, thank you.
Well, we're still even 15 minutes shy of the new items introduced to the agenda. So we have an opportunity here, and again, you know, if there are concept-type items, let's discuss them. Again, staff did a pretty good job at laying things out, but if we have additional discussion, we should have it.
Right, and so maybe the question is, don't get me wrong, I think I'm advocating for others as well who want the opportunity to comment, so it's not.
My one worry is, we gave staff and the applicant a lot of things to work out, and they could come back and satisfy our concerns, or they could come back and say, we couldn't do it, okay? And so therefore, we're not going to have that opportunity.
I think we will have that opportunity. I think we're, and Mark, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think what you're saying is, if we have items right now that we would like to discuss, let's discuss them. But if we're concerned with what might come back based on the feedback that we provided, I don't think that we're prepared to do that as a commission this evening.
No, we're not this evening. I'm saying. I'm saying if we combine this and they come back and the staff says, well, we couldn't do anything about the public space, or we couldn't do anything about the parking, okay, and there's no preliminary plan now, it's combined, then we have to vote against the whole project.
Agreed.
Or table it, yeah.
Agreed, and so, Mr. Hunter, if I can invite you back up. So you are, help me understand your expectations for next meeting with this combined. If you hear discussion and there is not general support, what are your expectations as for the next steps?
Tabled, period. And then effectively, the schedule would remain as it would have otherwise, right? Meaning that there would have been two meetings. So this is really just a chance to, you know, if we can get it right and we can figure everything out and get everybody comfortable, then that's great. And I'm wondering if what Mr. Supalak was referring to is just sort of our general architectural, like, does this feel good, should you pay more attention to this corner, those sorts of things that we really didn't dig into tonight?
You know this group well.
Yeah, yeah, and which, you know, we could absolutely have that conversation, and having that conversation doesn't change how I feel about this at all. It's just additional information that we're armed with.
So looking back to the commission, we do.
Just want me to go? Jane just hand waved me. All right. How about this? Just a general comment, landscape is going to be critical relative to everything, everything about the plant, you know, we all agree. You guys are amazing, bring some amazing on this. I'm going to say roofline is really, I know you're trying at the corners, but it's really kind of flat, which is meh, right? If it can undulate, that'd be great. I know, I'm going to add second, balconies, right, why not make them bigger if we can? You guys are sort of in line with the building footprint, but some of those can't believe are past. And I know these are getting a little bit specific. South side can be amazing, I mean, I think we all agree. I don't know that the public portion is, like, I don't know why I would go up to that upper public terrace. I don't know why anybody would come out of it, like, the gates are going to restrict all that, and I get, understand the gates, but I think there's something, all of that has to be rethought hard in order to really get people to navigate up there. And then I'm going to just generally say, I still feel like the architecture could use some work. I think Jane's head nodding at me, I feel like she, I might have heard her say something like that as well.
Mr. Wade?
I just want to put an emphasis on the South Park, or whatever we want to call it. I mean, that is the 100% place on this. It's a gateway into Bridge Park. I think it's really, really important. Right now, I think there's a lot of stuff going on, and I'm not sure it's all a place yet, but that corner has the building. But that corner has the ability to create a place for this development, for Bridge Park, that I think right now is just, looks like a pass-through, a walkthrough. And it's a gateway that deserves public art, a water feature, something dramatic there that as you drive in on, on Dale Street, that it's bang. And I think with that comes the architecture that backs it up. You know, that, that end of that building is gonna be, to me, the really important moment. And so, I, I'd like to get those two things really right. And I think it could really, I think we talked about all my other concerns with all the other issues, you know, the drop-off and the blank walls, and, you know? So, I think you got all that.
Any other comments? I think you'll hear the commission echo. You know us, we're looking for platinum. We're looking for platinum, and you know that each individual has their own kind of blinders on, but, but focus, I guess, is a, a better way to put that. Some of us focus on architecture, broad strokes, landscaping. You know us, and you know what we're looking for in Bridge Park. So, we look forward to seeing you back next time. I have a motion. Mr. Fishman, did you have something?
No, I, I just think that staff and the applicant are gonna spend a lot of time together. Okay? So, so, okay, I, I think we've covered pretty much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. So, Ms., Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. Thank you, thank you. Ms. Doherty, it was wonderful to meet you. We don't get to, we don't get to see you very often. These guys are, you know, old friends at this point. Everyone have a wonderful evening. Staff, looking to you for communications this evening, is there anything that you have to discuss?
I just have two quick things to share. Two are, or the first one is introducing two new staff members. So, I'm gonna call them out, they don't know I'm gonna do this. But Chris Will, he is our new planner, too. He's joining us from MKSK, so he will be seeing him here at Planning Commission, but also working on Long Range Projects, too. And then Heidi Rose, she is a new civil engineer, so she'll be working with Michael to bring forward all the engineering-related pieces of projects that you see. So, welcoming them to our team.
Wonderful. At, at a future meeting, would it be possible to get a little bit more information on Chris and Heidi, so that we can get to know them a little bit better?
Absolutely, we can do that.
And welcome.
That sounds good. And then the only other item I have is a modification to your December meeting date. We have been requested by the clerk's office to move that to December the 8th, so from a Thursday to a Wednesday due to a scheduling conflict.
December.
December 8th. It's a Wednesday. So, December.
From the 9th to the 8th.
What about it? Yeah. We do have a special meeting next week, yes.
And I need to put notice, I will be late. My flight does not arrive until five minutes after 6:00, and I don't drive that quickly. So, I, I will be here, but I will be tardy.
Okay. Well, Mark can kick us off next week then, so. Okay, so that's all I have.
If a calendar appointment could be amended to be sent out.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
And then, if we could, because some of our office accounts are locked right now, if IT could reach out to our personal email addresses with instructions, I, I even did the reset password, and it emailed me instructions, but the email went to the city account, and I can't get into the city account because my account's locked.
So, who's having trouble? Is everyone having trouble logging into their new? Okay. Lauren? Okay, well, let's, I will assume everyone's having trouble, and then if, Jane, do you have any, you're, you're good to go?
In the one drive, I can.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay. Oh, you did? Okay. Okay, good. All right, well, we'll see.
I'm having trouble, I don't have a password reset.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll sort it out for the rest of you then, so. Okay. We'll be on that tomorrow then, so.
Thank you very much. Yep. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for an entertaining Thursday night, and I hope, I hope you have a very restful weekend. We'll see you next time.